The Grand Prairie City Council Meeting, this is the second half of our Monday, October 21st, 2019 meeting. We'll start off with any delegations. We have a delegation opportunity at the start of the meeting. I don't believe we had any delegations let us know in advance that they had planned on attending. And that being the case, since we have no scheduled delegations, we can move into public hearings, starting with item 14.1, Bylaw C-1265C, the Transportation System Bylaw Amendment. And I will look to administration for a brief introduction.
Thank you, Mayor Given. Okay. So, the Provincial City Transportation Act requires that council establish by bylaw a transportation system which includes a map showing the approximate location of transportation facilities within the city. The existing bylaw was last updated in 2016. Since then, our transportation network has changed substantially. This has resulted in the requirement of this amendment. This updated version of the bylaw reflects the current transportation system and will meet the requirements of the City Transportation Act.
Okay, thank you very much. I'd look to any presentations. Is there anybody here who wish to make a presentation with respect to this Transportation System Bylaw Amendment update? I don't see anybody coming forward. Is there anybody who wish to speak to the Transportation System Bylaw Amendment? Again, seeing nobody, council, any questions for administration before we close the public hearing? Seeing none, then I will close the public hearing and we'll move on to business arising. Counsel, if I can get a motion for first reading, Counsel Thieson.
Thank you very much, Mayor Given. I would move that council give first reading to Bylaw C-1265C.
Thanks very much, Counsel Thieson. Of course, there's no discussion or debate on first reading. Please vote. Thank you. That motion carries. Counsel Thieson.
Thank you, Mayor Given. I move that council give second reading to Bylaw C-1265C.
Thanks, Counsel Thieson. Any discussion or debate on second reading of this bylaw? And seeing nobody, I'll call for the vote. Please vote. Thank you. That motion carries. Counsel Thieson.
Thank you, Mayor Given. I would move that council have third reading for Bylaw C-1265C.
This is a motion to have third and final reading here at this council meeting this evening. In order for us to move on to that third and final reading, this motion must pass unanimously. Is there any discussion or debate as to the merits of having third and final reading here this evening? Seeing no one ring in, then I will call for the vote. Please vote. And counsel, just make sure your vote's registered there. I think I'm missing one. Thank you. That motion does carry unanimously, Counsel Thieson, so we can proceed.
Oh, thank goodness. I would move that council give third reading to Bylaw C-1265C.
Thanks very much, Counsel Thieson. Any discussion or debate on third and final reading? Seeing none, please vote. Thank you. And I... It said seven votes cast, but everybody was in favor. So I'm not sure, do we need to re-vote on that one? Yeah, okay. We'll call for that vote again. Please vote. Showed the wrong total, but it showed the right colors. That's, I think, what we expected to see. Okay, thank you. Okay, that handles all of our business related to item 14.1. We'll move on to 14.2, Bylaw C-1390, the Hidden Valley Area Structure Plan. I call this public hearing to order and look to administration for an introduction.
Thank you, Mayor Given. So, alright, just getting this set up here. We're here to consider Bylaw C-1390, the Hidden Valley ASP. The subject property is located from what was formerly the northwest of the city, now it's kind of north-central where the new hospital is under construction. The initial ASP was adopted back in 2000. There were some OPs submitted for the site back in 2008, and those files were closed in 2016. The current amendment proposes some changes to modify the development concept and to update a large number of the sections. So because the amendments were so extensive, we proposed it as a repeal and replace to make a more legible bylaw. So, for a bit of context with the analysis of this proposed bylaw, I just wanted to do a quick review of the MDP requirements establishing the difference between an area structure plan and outline plan. In brief, an area structure plan is a high-level document for a larger area with more general direction for the development concept, generally supported by master plans, reports, and studies, whereas the outline plan is a much more specific document, gets to the detail of local roads and delineating ER to the specific area, and is supported by engineering design reports, top-of-bank studies, and biophysical reports. So, here's a side-by-side comparison of the current ASP on the left and the proposed ASP on the right for the development concept. As you can see, the development concepts are fairly similar. The proposed change in mixture of land uses simply modifies the mixture of single-family, multifamily, and commercial. And administration isn't really concerned with this proposed change in mixture of land uses. The concerns arise in the more detailed aspects of the ASP. So, in general, administration is supportive of adjusting the mixture of uses. The challenge is some of the proposed changes create greater ambiguity in the development concept. Several of the proposed changes don't meet current city standards, and a variety of the items aren't appropriate at the ASP level and will create greater challenges when preparing an outline plan. So, the first category of concerns in the analysis are public amenities. So, in the proposed amendment, they indicate that they will reduce the required top-of-bank road along Bear Creek from 35% to 10%. The indication is that they will try to meet the intent of the MDP by providing public access to the amenities along Bear Creek. The challenge is at the ASP level, there's not enough detail to see whether or not they're actually meeting that intent, and so we would suggest waiting until the OP stage to consider a reduction in those requirements. The change in the development concept also eliminates three park sites in the kind of northeast of the planned area, and there's a larger of single-family there where you would expect to see at least one or two neighborhood parks. At the ASP level, the location and size of parks is very general, so we would expect to at least see an indication that they would intend to provide those at that level. There are some sections that provide a very unusual level of detail about MR. So it goes into the point of specifying the area of MR for a specific landowner. Now, in ASP, it's very unusual to specify standards or areas of certain land uses by landowners simply because throughout the years, the land could be sold. So the design standards and land uses should be specific to the actual area. And also, the level of detail designating the amount of MR at this stage isn't appropriate because we don't know the final developable area for the planned area. We don't have ER designated. So it's more appropriate at the OP stage. And then there's a proposal to reduce the size of two of the school sites. The city is currently assessing our standards for school site sizes, and the proposed changes are in line with the new standards under consideration, but those have not been adopted yet. And so we would propose that the reduction be more appropriate at the OP stage or once the new standards have been accepted by the city. In terms of the change in the development concept, one challenge is the proposed amendments designate every single parcel of land that's intended to be commercial as commercial potential on a development concept map. It's a very confusing change, so rather than creating a different designation for what we would refer to as swing sites in the development concept, they simply labeled every single commercial site as commercial potential. Another issue with the idea of having swing sites, so what I'm referring to here is sites that are designated as commercial, but then in the text, they say it could potentially revert back to residential if market demands change. The city no longer accepts swing sites. It doesn't give us a greater enough, a level of certainty about what the land use is going to be, so it makes it more difficult to assess the required infrastructure. And then it just creates a lot of ambiguity. So, the other challenge is that if we were to accept swing sites in this ASP, they were not done properly as we would have done in other ASPs. So in other ASPs, in the past, there have been swing sites, but the method for incorporating them into an ASP is very different. Another item is a section referring to a bridge crossing over Bear Creek. So in the proposed amendment, the statement says that the crossing will be a vehicle crossing that may have a pedestrian component and will be paid for jointly by levels of government. Now, the challenge there is the actual recommendations from the Northwest Transportation Study say it will be a pedestrian crossing, and it may have a vehicular component based on a cost-benefit analysis. So the statement in the proposed amendment is the opposite of the actual recommendation from the report. And then the statement saying that the bridge will be paid for jointly by levels of government is very concerning. You can't compel government to pay for an asset through an ASP, so it's a very unusual thing to have in the text. And also, there's no commitment from the city to pay for the proposed bridge, and the wording sort of implies that there is, so I'd be very hesitant to commit to that in an ASP. Another item that's just related to the level of detail issue is geotechnical studies. So there are some geotechnical line work items that are included in the ASP. The challenge there is by the time we get to outline plan creation, those studies may be out of date and require updates, and so it may require changes to those lines. They may not, but we don't know until they get into OP preparation. There's also the challenge of a portion of the planned area not being included in the study. Within the text, there's also a challenge with the statement indicating that the city supported the use of the geotechnical studies in a letter. So it's very unusual to cite a letter in an ASP because it's not a public document. And also, the statement is somewhat misleading because the letter indicates that the city supports use of the geotechnical study to prepare an outline plan. The next set of items is just related to stormwater management. So there are a lot of outdated statements left in the plan related to MR credit for stormwater management that no longer really make sense. The amendment proposes fewer stormwater management ponds than are stipulated in our master plan. And one statement in the proposed ASP includes a line about the maximum size of a potential storm pond, but there's no engineering design work to support the size of the storm pond, so it would be very unusual to establish a maximum size for a storm pond at the ASP level, let alone without any design work. There's a number of minor issues. These are less of a concern. The plan is 20 years old, so going over it, there's going to be a lot of these things that come up. There were various number of statements that were flagged as outdated or redundant, and then towards the end of the application process, we noticed that the city boundary wasn't updated on Map 1, and Map 13 didn't have the outline plan boundaries updated. These are more minor issues. Administration offered to fix them, and the applicant declined. I'm assuming that's just because of concern for potential delays in the process by doing that. So, environmental impact and social impact. The proposed amendments, by adding a higher level of detail such as the development limit lines and statements about the MR, potentially restrict or create potential conflicts for delineating environmental reserve when we get to the outline plan stage. And then the proposed amendments reduce public amenities to below current city standards. Relevant statutes in master plans. So the relevant city standards that I had mentioned are in the municipal development plan, in the Muscat CP Park Master Plan, the Parks Master Plan, the Storm Granaries Master Plan, and the Northwest Traffic Study. So the risks, the proposed amendments will likely create some conflicts when trying to develop outline plans just because of the higher level of detail. It means that the plans are more likely to conflict, and by the time we get to the OP stage, the city's standards may have changed somewhat, and the OP requires meeting the most current city standards. So by getting into a higher level of detail at the ASP, you create challenges at the outline plan stage. And then a large number of these proposed items in the ASP conflict with current city standards. Budget implications, while it's not technically possible to compel the municipality to fund a bridge through an ASP, including the vague wording about the bridge being jointly funded by levels of government, may give the impression that the city's making some sort of commitment to that. Addressing issues, so we were able to work with the applicant on addressing a large number of issues that were in the initial application and making a lot of changes. The applicant did make a large number of changes based on administration's suggestions. The challenge was when changes were made to address our concerns, additional changes were made that created new ones. And given the impasse that we reached, the applicant requested to move forward to a public hearing with the bylaw as-is. So, the challenge we have is that the ASP does not include enough detail or doesn't come with supporting documents for administration to be able to consider some of the standard concessions that the applicant is seeking. If the ASP had more general wording about consideration for reduced standards and looking for efficiencies in things like stormwater management facilities, that would be more acceptable at the ASP stage, and then we could consider the more detailed options at the outline plan stage. So, in summary, the proposed amendments don't meet current city standards. The amendment will make the development concept more ambiguous with the use of swing sites. It contains a level of detail that's not appropriate at the ASP stage. It will create greater challenges for developing outline plans, and the amendment suggests that the city may contribute to paying for a bridge. So our recommendation is that council defeat the proposed bylaw at second reading. Thank you.
Thanks, Mr. Deroch. Are there any questions for administration at this stage? We'll have another opportunity before we close the public hearing, but are there any questions for administration from council at this stage? Counselor Thieson.
Thank you very much, Mayor Given. Mr. Deroch, just an easy question for you. So, if we do as the recommendation says tonight, is defeat the bylaw, where does the ASP go? Does it just return to its original ASP format, and then we go back to the drawing board with the developer?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So if the council defeats the amendment, it will remain as the current ASP, and the applicant can apply again for future amendments.
I do have another question.
Please.
Maybe a little bit harder of a question. So, there's a reduction of three park spaces in and around the area, but based off of the maps that I saw, I couldn't see the actual reduction at green space. With the reduction of the total park, all the park areas, how much park area is lost with the removal of those three sites? Or has it just been shifted to bigger parks in different places?
Mr. Deroch.
So, the reality with the area is that there's a lot of potential MR required due to proximity to Bear Creek. The main concern is just that it creates that large area in the northeast where there's less access to parks. I don't know the exact numbers. I could check if you'd like, but it would take a minute.
Yeah, if you'd like to do that work, that's fine, but I'm good with the answer so far.
Thank you. Counsel Bresson.
Great, thank you, Mayor Given. I'm just looking at the very last map outline plan, A1 area. And there's two areas, one labeled garden, one labeled dog bone. I'm wondering what administration's understanding of what those are is.
Mr. Deroch.
Thank you. So, those are areas that are flagged as of environmental/conservation interest. A lot of the wording related to them have been removed from the ASP. So it's more like a note to consider those environmentally sensitive areas and potential for public access at the OP stage.
Mr. Deroch, I guess just on the same question, on that map, it's unusual that there'd be line, that those green lines wouldn't be reflected in the legend. It seems like every other map, every color of line is sort of reflected in the legend describing what the line means, but those green lines, at least in my copy, don't appear to be. Mr. Deroch.
Thank you. Yeah, so, they should be identified in the legend. It's just a mapping mistake. Just a correction on my last point, the garden actually isn't flagged for public access. It's for, it's on the ranch property, I believe, and so it's actually just for environmental conservation but not public access.
Okay. Counselor O'Toole.
Thank you very much, Mayor Given. Can you tell me how landmass this piece of property is? And how much are we asking to give up for school sites and parks and sidewalks and stuff like that?
Mr. Deroch.
So, the gross developable area is 233 hectares. We currently have the potential total municipal reserve as 17.47 hectares. The standard is 10% of gross developable area as municipal reserve.
Counselor Friesen.
Thank you. Mr. Deroch, you indicated that some of these changes would be better done or better clarified at the OP stage? Which ones? I wrote down school sites and stormwater considerations. What else would be better discussed at OP?
Mr. Mayor, so, the geotechnical line work, so the Everon Development Line and the, sorry, the acronym is LTSL. Those details are typically at the outline plan stage. And then, just the final amount of MR will be determined at outline plan. We need to determine how much environmental reserve there is, and that will give us an understanding of actually how much gross developable area there is.
So, these weren't categorically not going to be approved just at the ASP? It's the inappropriate time to detail to that level?
Mr. Mayor, so for example, now I'm with the geotechnical line work. If the OPs were brought in today, it's likely that it would be the same line work, but if they wait five, 10 years, then those plans need to be updated. So, having a higher level of detail in the ASP can create confusion when you're doing the OP. In other items where you're specifying something like the size of a storm pond, if you go in the ASP and you say, oh, the storm pond is going to be a maximum of 0.9 hectares, and then you're going to prepare an outline plan, and the actual design reports say it needs to be 1.4, then you may have a conflict where the landowner is saying, well, in here it says 0.9, that's all I'm going to provide for stormwater management. So those are the types of challenges you can face with the municipal reserve or environmental reserve or storm ponds if you get too specific at the ASP stage.
Thank you.
Counselor Plott.
Thanks, Mayor Given. Just, can you maybe give me an idea of just, when we're talking about geotechnical studies and stuff, what sort of a shelf life do we expect these reports to have? How long is a geotechnical report good for?
So I'm going to defer to engineering on this one? 10 years?
Typically, it's about 10 years.
So the, just in case it didn't come across the microphone, the standard is typically 10 years. Often, reports like that will have a disclaimer in the report saying that they sort of don't go generally beyond that shelf life. Just make sure that that got repeated.
So, I guess a question on that. If nothing's changed with the use of land, what would come back differently with a geotechnical report? Or is it just more of a best practices that you just don't want it to be longer than 10 years? I'm just trying to get my head around what would change if they went and did another geotechnical report now?
Mr. Deroch.
Mr. Mayor, it's a slope stability study, so it's a water course that's constantly changing, so over 10 years, there can be significant changes. As you've seen in Alberta, the change in flooding events and things like that will significantly impact our waterways. And so, over 10 years, a slope can change significantly.
Counselor O'Toole.
Thank you very much, Mayor Given. I was just curious about the bridge crossing, the proposed bridge crossing. It was recommended that it be a footbridge, and the Hidden Valley has mentioned that they wanted to do a vehicle bridge. How would that be determined? I know we have a study done, but what clicks the ability to, for the city to put a bridge in? I know traffic flow and stuff like that, but I guess what I'm saying is there's going to be a number of houses there, and there's a hospital there. Would that not justify in the future? And when, when does this decision have to be for the bridge crossing? Is it at this stage now, or is it later on?
Mr. Deroch. Looks like we'll get some assistance, an assistant in the engineering department?
I just...
Ms. Donnelly?
I prefer to defer the engineering questions.
Absolutely.
Sorry, that's a, that's a question through the chair. It is something that we would have an opportunity in the future. We did look at it purely from a transportation perspective, and the traffic can be handled through dispersed out through the arterials. However, there, within the neighborhoods, it's definitely going to be desirable to have both vehicle and pedestrian for those people living there. But typically, services that are required for a neighborhood are typically currently paid for and funded by land developers. This one here would be quite a bit more significant than what other land developers have faced. So I suspect when the time comes, that there would be conversations about that. But to make a commitment at this point in time and something else in the future is basically the concern.
Counsel O'Toole?
So, when the hospital was built, was there any commitment on the hospital to put a bridge across the road at any given time? Do we know that? Ms. Donnelly?
Through the chair, no, there was no commitment from the hospital to fund or participate in a bridge connecting the two neighborhoods.
Counselor Clayton.
Thanks, Mayor Given. Couple of questions for you in regards to the process of this. You mentioned a few times that, you know, there was inappropriate things at the ASP level that should have been at the OP level. And, and I know it's the intent of council to have a strong economy and see future growth in our region, and so the expectation, in my opinion, would be that administration is always willing to work with future clients. So I'm curious on the process of how this, you mentioned that at one level, the ASP was sent back with modifications, and it came back with even more changes, and then in turn, the client chose to bring it to this, to this stage. How long was the whole process from initially when the client wanted to change this ASP?
Mr. Deroch.
Mr. Mayor, the original application was made approximately a year and a half ago.
Okay, and so, in your opinion, there's been ample opportunity for discussion, and the good old college tribe was done, and in your opinion, administration has done everything they can do to make this happen, and they've exhausted all possibilities?
Mr. Mayor, yes, so we did attempt to work with the applicant as much as possible, and we offered to make a number of concessions to make the application process work. At a certain point, the applicant was no longer interested in communicating directly with us, and so we weren't able to make any more types of negotiations through the process. And so, we went to a public hearing.
If, you know, on your page of risks there, I appreciate, you know, obviously, bringing forward the risks. I'm curious on your decision of defeating this public hearing or this, I wonder what percentage is based on the fact that many of these items shouldn't be at the ASP level, and what percentage of it is that you're worried about setting precedent for future development? Because I appreciate your intent to not want to set precedent for future, and, and, you know, you list numerous things that are implicated there. But it just, like, the technical pieces are what I'm missing of why there's not further acceptance of the, of the asks from the client.
Thank you. So, to the mayor, some of the things we just can't support because they don't follow city policy. So mainly, the top-of-bank road is a very significant one. The reduction from 35% to 10% without any real justification or evidence that they're going to meet the intent of those standards. And then the statement about the bridge is very, very concerning, just by the fact that it is, seems to be an attempt to compel the city to fund a bridge, and we've made no commitment. And then, the other challenge is, some of the other issues may be more minor, and it may be a matter of deferring some of these items to the outline plan, but there are so many of them that it's challenging to offer support with an... But there are so many of them that it is challenging to offer support with an amendment or anything of that nature.
Thanks, Councillor Clayton. I don't see any other council members with questions for administration at this time. We will have another opportunity. Councillor Plot, you want one at this stage?
Thank you. Just regarding the top of bank, and I can appreciate the 35% rule, but was there any consideration put into this with just how much bank there is in this development? I mean, it pretty much, you know, it's, it's got the potential to be a beautiful corridor with a lot of MR running right through the middle of it, which is something I think is pretty desirable for the city. But is there, is there any considerations put into areas like this where there is so much top of bank? Or is it just one steadfast rule that kind of blankets every development?
Through the mayor, so there's two points to that. I would agree that because the creek corridor crosses the entire plan area, there's lots of opportunity for top of bank road. It would be more appropriate to negotiate that at the OP stage when we actually know what the roads are going to look like and what the lots are going to be. The other challenge is, this is one of the items that was added in later on that I didn't actually have an opportunity to discuss with the applicant. I simply stated, we don't support this and they rebutted what we're going to go straight to a public hearing.
So, is there an opportunity, and I guess I can appreciate that we're saying this could be in a land plan stage. I think there's probably a risk, I'm assuming from the developer, that they don't want it to go all the way through there and find out that they missed the dance party kind of thing. So, is there any wording that could be put into this that could, that could have a range or something else that maybe wouldn't look so strong on a specific number?
Thank you through the mayor. So, in my presentation, I was sort of alluding to that when talking about more general wording at the ASP level. So, if we were to work together to create a statement that said that there's a potential for reducing the required top of bank in consideration of the significant impact it would have on the development of the area and that they would be able to meet the intent at the OP stage, then we could include wording that would acknowledge that we would consider that at the OP stage without putting a very specific number. Because there's no way to know what that number is going to be without an idea of what the design is.
Councillor Bressi?
Great, thank you. Just a, just a process question for administration. If council did follow your recommendation and defeated this bylaw today and a new application had to be made, what would the consequences on the developer be in terms of, I think it's something like 4,500 bucks to do an application? And also, you sort of took a year and a half. So, what would be the implications on the developer in terms of both cost and lost time if council did defeat this today? But said, hey, we're really interested in something similar maybe coming for us if these issues are addressed?
Thank you. So, through the mayor, to clarify in the timeline, the delay was the result of delays from the applicant. We had a very quick turnaround time. Initially, I was prepared to go to a public hearing within three months of receiving the application and the process just got delayed more and more. The consequences for the applicant would be completing any required revisions, so that added time and work. And a $4,000 application fee and a $500 advertising fee.
And Mr. Deroche, does council have the authority to waive those fees if we should consider it practical?
Through the mayor, I would have to defer on the process for that. It wouldn't be part of the public hearing, but it could potentially be a separate motion?
I see maybe Mr. Glavin or Mr. Johnson?
Thank you, Mayor Given. I believe historically, and I'm not sure how the fees and charges by law was updated, but historically, the director has been able to waive those fees. And we can confirm that.
So, but that, I mean, ultimately, the bylaw is council's bylaw. And if council chose to waive the fees, then that should be possible if it isn't, if there isn't already a provision for it.
Absolutely.
Okay, any other questions for administration? Seeing none, then we will move on to presentation submissions. I'd ask anyone in support of the proposed amendments to come forward or the applicant. Hopefully, the applicant is in support of the proposed amendments. Hopefully, they're sort of the same. And we may need an extra chair there, guys, so you can get your whole team up. We'll roll an extra one over for you there. Welcome, if you could all just introduce yourselves. Make sure the microphone is kind of pointed in the general direction of your face and it'll probably pick up your voice. If it, if it's not pointed at you, it won't pick you up. But welcome, gentlemen.
Thank you. I'm Bruce Statry with Bearstone Associates.
Welcome, Mr. Statry.
I'm Craig Gramm with Bearstone Associates.
Welcome.
John Vasquez, Upper Lands.
Welcome, gentlemen.
Well, thank you, guys, for allowing us the opportunity to speak to this area structure plan amendment. It's, it's been quite a work in progress. As Reed's alluded to, there's been a lot of back and forth with, with planning and, and a lot of it's been good. We, I think we've, we've come to a lot of the same conclusions for most of this. In the end, it sort of boils down to feasibility and economics and, which is always the case between planning and, and, and development. There's, there's always a give and take. And unfortunately, at this point, we've, we've spent a considerable amount of money and, and what we consider is a considerable amount of time to get to this point. And, and I don't want to say we, we torched the negotiations at any point. I just feel like at this point, we were, we're at a bit of an impasse on, on three or four of these issues. And that's really what it boils down to. I don't, we, we don't feel it's any kind of hostile environment. It's just at some point, you can go around and around at the table and then you gotta, somebody's got to make a decision. And we need help with that, I think, today. You know, to get here, there, there were a lot of things from when the time the original ASP came out, which is in 2000 or whenever the exact date was, that changed requiring this amendment. I mean, this is, we, we had, we moved where the hospital was going to be from Arbor Hills to where it is now. We had the college ASP changed. We, we, we had to do an extensive and expensive geotechnical report just to figure out where things could go. So, a lot of these things took a lot of time and that's just the way it is and, and we understand that. So, I guess at this point, we're, we're really here to, to contest, I suppose, the four, four things. So, the municipal reserve and top of bank road. The inclusion of our geotechnical study is a means of, of reference in the ASP. And the bridge crossing and the bridge funding. So, these are four sort of, you know, heart issues on this that create a lot of, that have cost us a lot of money and will create, could create a lot of money, loss of money or more expenditures. So, we would like to get to the bottom of this in, in, you know, through this process. We, we feel that the amendment's valid. And although it may not perfectly align with, with planning ideals, we, we, we feel a compromise can be made so that both sides win here. And, and that's sort of where we're going with this reduction on the top of bank road. Mr. Vasquez is going to speak a little more to this, but, but we, we, we do feel we're giving up a substantial amount of land and, and we're fine with that. But we would just like some relaxation on the hard and fast rules here to make it economical again for the subdivision. At the end of the day, we have to make some money off these lots and, and we're not necessarily trying to change the world here. We would just like a little bit of give and take. And so, that's what we're after. Certainty is sort of, well, in this economic climate, business sort of operates around certainty. And, and we've provided, I, I think we've overkilled sort of the requirements for an ASP. I don't think Reed's offside on that. We, we've, we've kind of went above and beyond in places to try and give everybody a level of certainty that what we're doing will work. And, and you guys don't see some of the planning documents that are in the fold. You, you see the glossy version of it, but none of this was done. You don't go spend hundreds of thousands of dollars on a geotechnical report just because you think it might help. I mean, the, we, we did it under the guise that we're, we're trying to give everybody a level of comfort here that this thing will all work out. And, and we need a level of comfort from a business standpoint that we can make some money at the end of this. So, the, the top of bank road, I mean, the MDP requires 35% of that road to be along the top of the bank. We, we're sort of asking for a bit of a reduction there because those are where we make our money. Those are the nicest lots. You've got lots of back onto the creek. You can imagine those are ones that probably sell first and help kickstart the development. So, we're asking for a reduction there basically to limit the amount of road we're going to put right there and then offer a few more lots. And, and I don't think we're reducing the school sites for anything, you know, out of, out of malice. We, we want to meet the requirements. We want to meet the requirements for roads. There's a lot of talks that need to happen after this ASP. We've got an outline plan, we've got subdivision. We're going to be in front of you guys a ton here. This is just a start and we're a couple million deep into this just to get going. So, yes, we kind of backed off on the talks because at this point, we spent a pile of money. And we would like to get to the next stage to give us a level of comfort that spending all this money is going to go somewhere, you know? And that's really what today's about. It's, it's, the back and forth of planning has been fine. I mean, they're doing what they're trained to do and we're hoping for, to make some money. So, I, I think they've done a good job, you know, trying to meet us in the middle on a lot of things. We just, these four points, we can't seem to get around and, and that's why we're here. So, we appreciate the opportunity to present and I would like Mr. Vasquez to give his thoughts.
You just lay it on there and everybody gets it the wrong side up first off. It always happens that way. But if you put any map that you wanted to reference on the plastic there, go ahead. We'll use our top camera. Look at that north at the top, well done. Must work with maps often.
Okay, so this is, this is a, an idea of where we want to put the top of bank roadway. As you probably aware or may not be, as you approach the engineered section of Bear Creek that runs, runs to the west, Bear Creek really just becomes a drainage ditch. It's much not, it's not much wider than the ditch along Canfor. The best parts of Muscibi Park are the areas that we've identified in this map. You can see in the, the yellow is where we think is a logical place for the top of bank. To put it along the areas that get narrow as you move northwest is sort of, you didn't think it would offer much in the terms of amenities. Where you can see the red hash marks, that's environmental reserve or MR. So, that's sort of a visual of what it would look like to give people that maybe are limited in their movements a, a, a bit of a vista. That's where the highest portions of the banks are. Okay, and so, that's sort of where we're, we're coming from. The 35%, we don't know where the city got that. I suspect it was just pulled out of the air along the lines of where they got the percentage of, you know, of multifamily land that needs to be in every subdivision that has since been backed away from. And so, I don't know that that's, you know, some imperative. And so, I don't know how much, how difficult it would be to move off that, but that's kind of where we're going. Second item, geotechnical study. I don't know why Reed intentionally didn't submit this with your information, but this is a letter we received from the city in February 15. Firstly, we've done three geotechnical plans. You know, they're talking about too much detail. Well, it seems like it's too much detail unless the city wants the detail. Because although the area structure, the geotechnical isn't supposed to be done to the outline plan, we were told no uncertain terms by the city that it's our way or the highway, do it or don't submit your ASP. Because so much of the land is governed by, by creek bank. And so, we did the first one, Albany McCain, turned down by the city, ignored. We did the second one, update by Albany McCain, ignored by the city. Now, we're into it for 200 grand anyway. So, then we, I met with Christine and she says, well, use my guy. Use parkland. And I said, okay, we'll use parkland. We both agreed to that. I agreed to that. And I said, yeah, but if we're going to spend even more money, we don't want to get rejected again. You have to give me some sort of letter that says, you know, subject to something changing. Reed said that these rivers change all the time. They don't. They change with the geo, you know, the flood area does, but you should be aware that this also factored that in because of city. Because the province of Alberta, since the, around the high level floods, they, they remapped that creek. They don't change that greatly, at least not in, you know, 10 years or so. And so, we got a letter you can read from the city that says that, you know, all things being equal, this geotechnical plan will need, will generally be fine. We accepted that it will probably still need to be updated because who knows how long it, it'll be until we develop. And it's all driven by the economy. It's not driven, it's not, if we build it, they will come. It's driven by the economy. So, I don't know why he didn't include, why Reed chose to intentionally not include this letter, which is a vital piece of the puzzle in your package. But if you read it, I don't know if you read it upside down. Of course, you turn it the other way. We got it. But, so that's, that's sort of a missing piece that we need to talk about. In terms of no more communications, you know, yeah, you're right. At some point, we broke up, we broke off communication because frankly, we got tired of spending money. Eric got caught to a tipping point with the administration where it said it's our way or the highway. And, you know, I guess we just said, well, there's nothing more that we can do. We have provided a tremendous amount of concessions to the city and, and it's just not something we could deal with anymore. The next item I'd like to put up, this is a matrix that shows the amount of land that we're, have agreed to surrender to the city. It's 33% of the land base, 100 and, what have we got here? 129, 128.5 acres is, of the 400 acres is going to be park. So, when your planning department tells you that we deleted some parks, what they didn't tell you is that, that being said, there is going to be over 100 and what, 50 acre, 130 acres of parks in this subdivision. I don't know why they didn't tell you that. It would have been a fair presentation had they said both terms and let you guys decide it for yourself. So, there, so it's not like we're going in here trying to, trying to create a subdivision that isn't appealing or one that is lacking in park amenities. There will be lots of park amenities. You can see that we have pathways, linkages of 17.94 acres. Because what's the point of having Muscibi Park if you can't link to it? Again, it's not something they chose to bring up because it didn't fit what they're trying to sell. School sites, yeah, I think they're a little light on the school sites. And again, that's for the same reason. We've been in discussions with the school, the various school boards and every indication is those sites will work. As you guys know, there's sites all over town that aren't going to get used. I mean, from a practical standpoint, you know that. And so, we, we didn't see that as a big deal. The next item is the bridge crossing. That is, the bridge crossing is in the transportation plan. It's, you can see where it is. I think we should maybe go back to the other plan. You can see where the bridge crossing is. Clearly, it's going to link the major employment areas of the hospital with a large portion of land to the west. I rather to the north and to the west. I think it's a vital connection. I think regardless of what's decided tonight, when we, if we were to fast forward 15 years and that gets put in there, I think we'll all see that that bridge is very popular. It won't just be used by the subdivision. It's going to be a shortcut by anyone in Arbor Hills or anyone else that lives north or west in order to get to the major employment centers. I don't know why the city wouldn't support something like that. I mean, the whole idea nowadays is about linkages. What is the point of creating an enclave to the north and to the west of what is something in the neighborhood of a couple hundred acres of housing that have no connection? And so, our position is there that it should not, it should be there and it should be in the ASP. The other item is the bridge funding. We are lucky, there is no way that we would be able to fund that bridge. It'd be an illogical request because it's not like in other cities where you might see a local bridge, a local bridge crossing. It'll end up being probably holding traffic patterns or traffic numbers as high as an arterial, even though it's going to be called a collector. You know, when you run the numbers, that's probably what it's going to be. There will require some level of funding. And that's all we're really trying to say. We're not trying to put the city on the spot. It would be ridiculous. How could we do that? Because you don't even know what your funding is going to be. But the whole concept behind it is, is that we need to have a willingness from the city to work with developers to say, hey, yeah, if there might be some available funding, let's explore it and see what happens. The planning department's not even willing to go that far. That said, these four issues, we've spent so much money already. We're not, we're not willing, I'm not willing to proceed any farther with this outside of the ASP. These, without these four issues being resolved, there are just too much risk to my company. These, without these four issues being resolved, there are just too much risk to my company relative to what the cost. Because in the absence of this, we could, our next, our next, uh, job is to do an area structure plan, or sorry, rather, an outline plan. It'll cost about a quarter million bucks and I'm not willing to spend a quarter million dollars without knowing whether you guys are in favor of this bridge crossing, whether or not, um, this geotech, the, you won't even give us the inclusion of the reference to this geotechnical study that you guys asked for. And without, um, some relaxation of this top of bank road, roadway, it just, uh, you know, the business needs certainty. And remember, you, you get to see us again. We can't do anything without you guys agreeing it, agreeing to it. I mean, tomorrow, we can't go out and do anything. You get to see us again at outline plan, we need to take another whack at us. And you can, you can, uh, we have to go to, after that, to sub, subdivision plan, when you get another shot at it. So it's incorrect to say that, uh, this is the be all and end all. And we've all seen areas, seen area, area structure plans, I've read most of them in the city, that have all have uniqueness to them, i- i- if that's a polite word, where there's some sort of different, uh, scenarios outlined that maybe aren't consistent with, entirely inconsistent with city planning or with other, what's been done in other parcels. And that's because every parcel is unique, particularly this parcel, it's profoundly unique. So what we're asking is that this gets first, second, and third reading, um, so that we can proceed to an outline plan. In the absence of it being approved, we just simply will stop. And I think that doesn't work for us and it sure the heck probably doesn't work for the city. At some point, there should be some development going on out here. But, uh, no one, I don't think any good businessman would spend a quarter million dollars, which is going to be the next step, without these four issues being buttoned down. We've ignored a whole bunch of other issues or we conceded on a whole bunch of other ones. Um, but these four, I've sat and thought time and time again, I just, they're, they're just four issues I can't concede on. So that's what we're, that's what we're asking you to do and, uh, I guess you guys will decide whether we proceed or not.
Okay. Thanks very much, gentlemen. Anything else to present there before I get into questions? Counselor Palat?
Uh, thanks, Eric. Uh, appreciate the guys coming in today and the presentation. I just wanted to go back, there was one slide there that kind of showed, uh, I might, might have misunderstood, but I thought it said three hundred and seventy-five meters was ten percent of top of bank for, I'm just trying to get a magnitude, so, I mean, just kind of times it up by three and a half, I guess, or, so we're saying there's thirteen hundred and twelve meters of top of bank potentially in this whole development? Pardon me? Would be three hundred and seventy-five. So if, if I'm using the thirty-five percent of the city's required, there'd be about thirteen hundred meters of, of a bank required. Um, you, you kind of, uh, assume, is, is that wrapping the whole, the other side of this as well or is that just all on the east side of the land?
No, this, this yellow line represents ten percent of the top of bank of the entire planning area, the entire four hundred acres, including both sides of the creek. So that's, it's not just ten percent of the, of, of what we might call the west side of the creek.
So, so worries, um, we're going to have another chance to ask him in a great situation. Okay, thank you.
Uh, Counselor Resi?
Great, thank you. Uh, so, so, so something I've heard is that, uh, pu, that public access and people being able to access the creek is a part that you guys see being here in this plan too, just, you don't think the full thirty-five percent is needed. It's kind of curious to look at that picture that was just up. Um, how are you envisioning people on the east side, in the east side of the neighborhood being able to access the bank and being able to get into that trail system?
Well, that's a good question. I'm going to just change slides. Um, so there's the top of bank roadway, right? Okay, but then you also, if you look on this one, you can see, which item is it here, guys? Or the, um, right here, seventeen point nine acres, third item down? That is the, the pedestrian linkages that'll tie into Mussepe Park. So it isn't just the roadway, the, so that's how they will access it, seventeen acres of, of pathways.
Okay. Counselor Resi, something further?
And then just another question I had for you, uh, there was talk about how concessions have already been made in this, in this ASP and you guys have made concessions to administration. Could you give me an example of one or two of the areas that a compromise or a concession has been reached?
Oh gosh, there's, there's so many, I don't even know where to start. Um, we have conceded areas in terms of, uh, a lot of it was during the, um, creation and acceptance of the, the geotechnical report. Um, when we did the third draft with parkland, which we ultimately had, were forced to do, there was an additional ten to fifteen acres that we just gave up. I mean, we think are, is frankly incorrect. We think it was just heavily skewed on the part of the municipal government, uh, on the, uh, but we just got to a tipping point where we were exhausted, we just exhausted us. Um, so, I mean, that's a lot of land and that, that was for lands outside flood, don't let them, don't, it's not, I'm not talking about flood fringes or floodways. We've already accepted that, that just stands to reason in light of what's happened in, in recently. So that, that, that was a, uh, a huge one. Um, I believe the original ASP contained one school site and, and now we're into two school sites, which is a fairly significant change. I, I realize the acres are less, um, and it's not our intent to provide a school site that doesn't conform or, or won't meet the requirements. We, we need to get into that and we, we want to get into that in the outline plan. So we've got an area on here, we know that'll change. The MR is going to change as well. I mean, we've got MR and, and we can kind of outline it from our geotechnical, but in these outline plans, there has to be some sort of MR for parks or, or centralized park. And, and you guys haven't got to see that yet and you won't, um, until we move to the next step. But there, there is some significant park areas to be included in the future as well. It's just, at what point do you, do you say enough's enough? And this is sort of where we are. It's not a, it wasn't a malicious thing between planning and us, it's just we got to call the ball somewhere and this is it. So we're not done with MR and we're not done with school sites. And I think Reed wants more detail at the outline level, outline plan level, and we will provide that. I promise you that. Um, it's just that, so th- these are, I guess there's two there for you. Um, I don't have a long list in my mind, but, uh, but hopefully that helps. Yeah, thank you.
See, Counselor Friesen?
Thank you. I have two questions if I may, Mayor Given. Thank you. Uh, so, um, I just heard you say, Mr. Tatri, that you know that you're not done with MR and you're not done with the school sites. And I heard Mr. Deroche earlier say that perhaps with more general language in the ASP, um, we would be more amenable, the administration would be more amenable to moving forward. Would you be okay with that general language? Um, Mr. Vasquez, if it said, you know, that, that, um, um, the school sites yet to be determined, um, potentially the acreages, or the, the acre amounts that you've specified now. Um, same with the MR and perhaps also that top of bank road. Would you be okay with saying that, um, the city will consider reducing from thirty-five percent, um, but not hanging your hat on ten percent?
No.
Okay.
You know, I mean, I'd like someone to explain to me why a hundred, look at, if we go back to this, I would be interested in, to this map, I'd be interested to see the argument, if you see there, it's, if you could put that, that up again, whoever runs that thing. Um, a hundred and twenty-nine acres of park space in here. Which one of us thinks that isn't enough park space for this subdivision? Like, is there really any argument can be made by anybody? Forget whether you're a planner, an engineer, or anyone. I mean, a hundred and twenty, that's one and a third times the size of Wedgwood. Put in perspective, how could, I don't, I can't for the life of me see any argument why that isn't enough park space for a subdivision. I would be interested in hearing a counterargument to that, but that isn't.
Counsel Friesen, was your question about park space or is it about the top of bank road?
No, perhaps if we can, uh, look at the, the top of ba, the top of bank road. Um, so you have said ten percent and it seems that you're quite set on ten percent, but, um, you know, if that's something that at the ASP level, we, we can't, um, agree to, but potentially at the OP level, we could get down to close to that, although perhaps not quite ten percent. For instance, um, would that be okay with you? In which case, we would have to put more general language in the ASP. Would you be amenable to that? And, and with the school sites was the other, was the other, um, um, one that I specified.
Well, it's probably going to cost, well, not probably, it's going to cost us at least a quarter million dollars to an outline plan, so probably not. Because all that, all that may happen, I'm not saying it will, but all that may happen is that we get to that and they just say, yeah, no. You know, we're at, if we're at ten percent and you're at thirty-five, do you want to throw out another number?
Well, potentially. I, I mean, you know, if, if it's, if it comes to, um, what I, what I heard from Mr. Deroche, um, no, not tonight, because what I heard from Mr. Deroche was that at the OP stage, that's when we have a better idea of, of what we, um, could be okay with. And I, I think, um, certainly from my, my perspective, I can't speak for my colleagues, although I suspect one or two of them are of this mind as well. We really would like to see this go forward, um, but we may or may not be comfortable tonight with saying that, yeah, ten percent is going to be okay. But maybe when it gets to OP, um, we'll, we'll be able to get a little closer to that when, when Mr. Deroche has the numbers that he's satisfied with and has that, uh, a little more certainty with what we see at an OP level as, as compared to an ASP. And I heard, uh, Mr. Tatri say, we know we're not done with wiggling on the numbers, um, in particular with the school sites. So what, um, you know, and, and yes, from your perspective, there is the potential that we get there and we say no. But there's also the potential that you, um, hold hard and fast on that tonight and we say no tonight. So, um, I don't know, could you, can you speak to that? I suppose this isn't your call to make, Mr. Tatri, but, but, um, do you see what I'm saying, Mr. Vasquez?
I do, but, you know, for me to go to the next level, I mean, business needs certainty, right? You know, the next level is going to cost me a quarter million dollars. And if I do spend my quarter million dollars on top of the two million we already spent and then, you know, it's just, yeah, no, we decided we want our thirty-five percent. Because there couldn't always be an argument made that you need thirty-five percent.
Uh, yeah, and, and there's.
Probably make an argument that you need a hundred percent.
And there's often an argument that maybe we only needed fifteen or whatever else.
Job is to make that argument, right?
Um, perhaps let's, perhaps let's move to my next question, which was regarding the, the bridge, uh, discussion. I may have missed, what happened to flip it from the original recommendation of being a pedestrian bridge to, um, the ASP that now says we, you'd like to have it as, uh, vehicular bridge?
The.
What, what triggered that switch?
Of the hospital.
Okay.
Because, you know, the hospital used to be north of us.
Mm-hmm.
Originally it was on our line, then it was north of us, but now, now look where that population base is. Up there, let's get a new map up here. So now, now, now the, the hospital's changed. So now the hospital's here, the population's here.
Thank you.
And so I, I, we thought, I mean, I think, and frankly, we ran this by other planners in other cities, just out of, you know, just for kicks. And yeah, I mean, it seemed to be a pretty good idea to put a connection between a huge amount of housing and, uh, um, billion dollar employment center.
Thank you.
Counsel Friesen, so just on that, uh, uh, Mr. Vasquez, so is there an intention then that the roads in the north would be arterial roads? If you're sort of envisioning that being fairly high traffic volume, um, more folks from the northeast, I guess, using that bridge connection to get to the hospital? Uh, would those roads be built to an arterial roadway standard then?
Uh, we've had this discussion many times. That's not our wish. I mean, we, we would want it to be built to a collector standard, but people being people are going to shortcut. And, and so, yeah, no, we, we, we had that, a discussion many times with the administration and preferred to be collector.
So.
But collector that is in, that is going to end up used as an arterial, in all likelihood.
Would that create any sort of risks or challenges with, I guess, essentially overloading those collector roads? If, if you sort, I could appreciate what you're saying about, uh, needing that bridge connection because it would draw vehicles. So does that also necessitate higher volume roads in that northeast section?
I think, if I, if I may, um, we actually, in that particular portion of our ASP, we referenced the northwest traffic and, and their recommendation. And then all parties were in agreement. We just feel like now it's sort of not in agreement all of a sudden. That's where it came from, that direction from traffic.
And, and does the traffic report recommend making those other roads arterial roadways?
I think it suggests, well, I don't have it in front of me right now, but, um, I think it suggests that, that car traffic would be, would require car traffic on there as well. So I understood, we understand that bike and walking paths are, want to get across the creek, but like Grant sort of alluded to earlier, this, this is going to vary the need to connect with motor vehicle traffic. So as far as arterial versus collector, not necessarily, but at the end of the day, a bridge, it will be needed in there. And that's sort of where we're going with it. It's, it's not like we were adding a bridge just to make it arterial or anything like that.
Okay. Uh, Counselor Minhaus?
Yes, thank you. My question is on the bridge again, like you mentioned that's the number four and that you're not willing to do at all, but you're expecting some money from the city. Do you have any cost related? And, uh, then question come to the administration. Did we done joint with the city and private bridge in the past or what kind of percentage did you share the cost? Do you have?
Sixty. Sorry, just have to make sure that it's kind of in front of you there a bit.
Sorry about that. Um, yeah, like, uh, just to comment on that, I guess, um, sixty-eight thou was around that eight million dollar mark, I think, eight, nine million dollar mark. Um, I don't think this is going to be the same size bridge, a little bit smaller, but.
No, we've, we've surveyed that and it's about a, you can, a hundred and twenty-foot bridge crosses it. And, uh, so it, uh, I don't think it'll be anything, anywhere near there. Although, you know, tonight we're willing to, uh, if you wanted to change item four, which is the discussion over bridge funding to instead of saying the city will, um, you know, would provide funding, I think is what we have now, we would agree to changing it to the city, uh, will investigate funding opportunities with three level of governments. And then we would be willing to settle for that. Because it's tough to commit to anything until you have a bridge figured out and until you know what your fundings are, fundings are, uh, so again, we could, you could, we could agree to saying the city will investigate only, you can put in the word only, the availability of funds from all levels of government. We would be willing to accept that.
Counselor Minhaus? Uh, Counselor Palat?
Thanks, Michael. Uh, kind of on the same vein here and I'll probably ask an administration the same question so they want to get their thinking cap on it for later, but on the wording on this, I'm just wondering if we couldn't have some kind of wording that was a condition of, once there's a certain amount of development that has actually been achieved in this area or a certain amount of traffic count that's been happening, that that would trigger a bridge or trigger a road? I'm, I'm just wondering if we could be adding some sort of wording or some kind of beverage around that. Because at the end of the day, you know, as I look at this overall plan, there's, there's two other quarters to the, along a hundred and sixteen street. And, I mean, realistically, you know, we're asking these people to come out around, all the way around if they want to go north or another area. So it would, it, it, to me, makes natural sense, we'd want a bridge at some point. I can appreciate the city's position of saying, we're not just going to pay for it unless we have to. But I'd certainly like to see a mechanism that if there was a certain percentage that's developed or there was a certain amount of road, uh, traffic volume, that it would trigger that. And then just wondering, you know, and I'll ask administration the same question, but would that satisfy you guys as well? If something like, I mean, I appreciate we're looking for wording tonight and that's maybe a little bit further in the weeds than we need to be getting, but just to try to understand where you guys are at.
Yeah, I mean, we, we wouldn't want to proceed with anything like, or the city or anyone for that matter, proceed with a bridge if there wasn't a need. I mean, I, I don't disagree with that at all. There's no point in proceeding down that road. So, I mean, that wording would be fine.
Um, gentlemen, I had, just had a question. So it looks as though you have sort of some tentative lot phasing, or lots, uh, for the southwest corner of the, of the ASP area. Is there, um, I guess that's the type of detail we would typically see in an outline plan. And so I'm just wondering why, um, it looks like you started down the outline plan path. Is there a requirement to do an outline plan for the entire area or could you start first in that smaller area, which it looks like there's already been some work done on?
Yeah, we're, we would do it for the entire area and of course, the biggest costs are the reports, design reports. The reason that's there is that I thought it would be illogical for me to request a ten percent, um, top of bank roadway without giving some sort of visual as to what, you know, what that looks like. And the internal roadway system in there isn't meant to sort of be much, that was probably drawn up very, very recently. But uh, you know, the, doing these drawings are nothing compared to the design reports, that's where it gets expensive.
And so is that other uh, map that's on the uh, overhead right now, does that show actually the ten percent in context of the whole area?
Yes.
Okay, and so, so that's actually what the request is, is to have that amount as top of bank, open road for the whole area? Is that correct? Okay.
And in fact, that would be where we suggest that it goes, because as you can see, uh, you know, I spent my life along the Twisties uh, uh, in, you know, Bear Creek, and the, the best views are where you have the wide open part of the creek, right? If you go down closer towards, um, you know, up in here, I mean, that, look how wide that creek is, that creek just becomes no wider than you can throw a football across it, right? Not that exciting to drive, drive along, where over here, it's a, it's a large area, and it would, uh, high bank, in large area, give you views along what you see on the Twisties on one hundred, one hundred and second.
Thank you, Councilor Palat?
Uh, thanks, Michael. Just on, on the same thing with the ten percent MR, um, appreciated, you know, your conversation there, but am I, am I safe to assume there would still be openings for trails and pass systems MRs that would actually allow you to get into the trail system and other spots around that path?
Yeah, we, uh, on this, on this uh, map here, if we can get the camera back. You see right there, it's seventeen point nine acres of additional linkages over and above the top of bank roadway. So to put that in perspective, it's a lot of linkages. And remember, we're, the, the park, the park space in the subdivision, I kept out, but bring it up again, it's hundred and twenty-nine acres. That's the size, that's, that's one and a half times the size of the landmass of Wedgwood. So I don't know how you can argue there's not gonna be enough park space. My God, you probably want, it's probably too many spark space considering you're spending nine million dollars a year on parks.
Just, just uh, I guess on that, sorry, just interrupter, but just on the, how many proposed MR linkages do you see going into the trail system? Hook up into that, um, these paths. And I guess for me, and what I'm asking is that, you know, if we, if we worked with administration, said, you know, the ten percent that you've, that you've allocated makes sense, and it makes sense to me, I'd still wanna make sure there was enough access to the trail systems that you wouldn't have to go, you know, a long, long stretch without being able to have access into this park system, it's one of our jewels of the city, so I'd wanna make sure people had opportunity to get in there. Um, but that would also be more than, you know, that would trigger more than ten percent in itself, if we're gonna look at twenty or fifteen or twenty different openings to get into the trail system.
Yeah, um, I guess that would be something that we could look at at the outline plan stage. We'd be providing more details on where those linkages would be as we get into the nuts and bolts of the design.
So can, can I just maybe, you know, I know we're all just spitballing here a bit, but you know, if it was something in the wording coming back, saying that, okay with ten percent MR, with a minimum of, you know, a certain amount of MR or MUL locations to get into the trail system, but I, I mean, we're gonna have to have access to that, and that's gonna drive you up over ten percent on what you're showing there now anyways. And that's where, you know, so either, it's either reducing, if you guys are stuck on ten percent, it's either reducing that footprint you're showing us, because we're still gonna need access to the trail systems, or conceding that, you know, that's ten percent plus, we're gonna have to have PUL openings of some, some space, which will drive it up ten percent again. Just, you know, something to think of for you guys.
Just, gentlemen, if I could ask a question about that table uh, that we just saw on the map, uh, in terms of the MR and, and open space dedicate, dedication, I guess. So can you show me which of those areas are, are MR versus which ones might be ER, environmental reserve? Cause I, typically, I guess we would reflect them as ER, and I'm, it's not clear to me on here which ones are ER, cause my understanding is that, I'm gonna use a whole bunch of Rs, MR is on top of ER dedication, and, and that table doesn't really show me, shows thirty-three percent, which sort of implies that there's thirty-three percent MR, but I actually have a feeling that, that might be inclusive of ER?
It is. We don't have a, we, we, we don't have a, a graphic right now showing the setbacks to where ER ends. We, we actually do, we're not here to where ER ends and where MR starts.
So which of those numbers on this table that, that we've seen a couple times would be traditional MR?
What's traditional MR?
Parks and school sites, I think is generally, uh, I'm not sure if pathways are included in MR. Um, but, yeah, they, they may be, and pathways also can be in ER. So can you give me a bit more of a sense, like I say, I see that it was thirty-three percent is the number that's highlighted there at the bottom, I'm just curious if there's an order of magnitude sort of separation between the ER and MR?
Don't, yeah, we don't, we don't have that at our fingertips, no.
Okay.
Um, traditionally, I mean, we've got two school sites are in there, and then the, the MR that you can see on here is, is, is sort of with ER. The both is in there, just we, we need to show you the graphic on where the ordinary high watermark is.
Okay.
Where the ER would start versus where the MR setback would occur, which was part of the geotechnical study, just we don't have it with us.
So is that level of detail typically covered in an outline plan? Like is that, is, cause that is starting to get pretty granular about exactly which piece of land is what?
Yeah, that's correct, like, if I could switch over to this graphic quickly, is, um, it does give some of the, it's very hard to see here, sorry, excuse me, um, where some of those bank setbacks are, the, the lineage here for um, the creek. But um, there is some graphics that we have that has generated kind of some of those pockets of ER, we just don't have it with us. So it's, it's hard to delineate and actually point them out without getting into a little bit more detail.
It's a combination of the two, and frankly, the public doesn't give a damn. You know, um, we've all been on the, uh, in Bear Creek, when they're, when they're walking uh, down the Bear Creek trails, they don't care if they're stepping on ER or MR. Um, so that's a bit of a red herring, because just, you got, the city has often always used ER as amenity space as well. Because if we were to map the existing Mussetsepee Park, we would find a great deal of that is ER as well.
Yeah, yeah, I, I agree.
So, um, yeah, are there areas where they can play, have a baseball game? Yeah, there needs to be some flat and organized school sites, you bet. But the people, but when they're biking or hiking, the publicly it doesn't give a damn. Uh, the planners might give a damn, uh, but the, and the administration might care, but the people walking their dogs don't.
Yeah, yeah, I guess my question just was in terms of this percentage and, and that representation that it was thirty-three percent, which I was just trying to understand.
Have to go back to, it's a hundred and thirty-nine, twenty-nine acres of, of, of green space in here. If you gave ten percent of the four hundred acres, it would be forty. So the other ninety acres are green space that people will be able to use irrespective of sort of the convoluted designation or the cryptic way the city decides to designate it.
Okay, Councilor Till?
Yeah, thanks, uh, just a question, uh, this started ten years ago, correct?
Yeah, it's been nineteen years.
Okay, so at that time, you mentioned in the presentation that there was one school site originally suggested at that time?
And- Exactly, so yeah.
And there was no schools in that area at all at that point in time? And uh, so recently, there's been two schools built in a very close proximity? And whose request was it to put the two school sites on this particular property, was it uh, uh, I don't need to point names, but I just kinda wanted to know. Yeah, three, there's three schools in the area then?
I don't know the answer to that.
Well, that would mean that there would be five potential schools in a relatively close distance. Remember when I used to walk to school, it was five miles uphill all the time, and I had to borrow my brother's shoes. But I was just wondering if, I'm trying to be very, is that potential overkill? I know you talked to the school boards? And is there a plan to put schools there in the near future?
No, there's no plan to do it in the near future. There may be a plan in the long future, but you know, we, with all the changes that are occurring all over the place nowadays, who knows? But um, we originally started off with one site, now we have two. I'm not, and, and Dennis Hasiid has been on this file for ten years, and of course, he uh, wasn't able to be here tonight. He could probably answer that question, but I can't. But I mean, from a developer's standpoint, we're, we're not eager to starve a subdivision of schools either. I mean, anyone that's done land development knows that the first locks a cellar around the school. So, but it's just, we think that we've adequately serviced the, the uh, subdivision. Cause part of the school site isn't just the footprint of the school, it's also the amenity, the park amenities area surrounding the school. And that is more than covered in this hundred and thirty, twenty-nine acres of, of amenity space.
It's Councilor Till, I don't see any other council members in, oh, Councilor Bressi.
Sorry, thank you. So I just wanna make sure, you said at the beginning of your presentation, there are four things that are really important to you. I wanna make sure I'm understanding all four of them and recalling them correctly. First of all, you're saying, don't make us give up any more MR than we've proposed in this.
Yeah.
Um, secondly is ten percent top of bank for roadway, don't make us give up more than that. Um, the fourth one, I'll come back to the third in a second, but the fourth one was this bridge crossing, at least be considering government funding and have a commitment.
Yeah, we're backing off that tonight, we're not asking to fund it, we're just saying, um, use the weight of the city's influence to examine the availability of funding from all levels of government. Cause we can't really do that as private people, you know, we can't phone up the province and the feds and talk about that. So that's all we're asking, we're, we're conceding that tonight.
Totally, and then I'm also trying to understand this geo, this geotechnical one, where I really get what you're saying, we don't wanna do another geotechnical report in Ivy's still state, but I'm also trying to figure out, well, what happens if the market really sucks and this land doesn't get touched for thirty years? Or, that's, that's what I'm worried about, is I get where you might be saying that this has to have a long enough shelf life to make it worth it? There's another side to you of the what, what ifs this ASP lasts for a very, very long time, so give me some comfort there, or help me figure out how we might be able to make that work.
Can do that. So the second, take a look at the second sentence of this, and I, and I agree wholeheartedly with it. We agree with you, the, the rules might change, we might have another crazy flood or something happen, we have no trouble updating this again. But administration didn't, you know, after forcing us at this level of detail, the ASP spent a quarter million dollars on, on uh, on a geotechnical study, then they did that, and then, then as soon as we did it, now it's, oh yeah, and by the by, we're not gonna include it. Well, you don't get to do both. You know, it's very cavalier approach to doing business. And so all we're asking is that we include the wording as outlined here, that reads, you know, where are we here? Uh, where does it speak to the ASP? Here we go. Uh, we just wanted included, inclusion of reference to the geotechnical study. We're not saying that it is the study, we're saying it's the study now, and that this letter, that they just decided not to show you tonight, will uh, guide us through updating it if need be, and I have no disagreement with that at all. But to keep it out after forcing us to spend a quarter million dollars is asinine.
So just to make sure I understand, you're, you're saying that it's okay if you need to do more geotechnical work, things have changed when you're doing subdivision and actually building something you just really wanna guard against having to do that before even in an outline plan?
Yeah, well, yeah, well, yeah, we're certainly not gonna do that, do it anymore for an outline plan. I mean, this, this is a, probably the, the industry leading geotechnical report because of the vast amount of uh, bankage, bank uh, there.
And then if I, yeah. Well, yeah, so just on that, uh, Mr. Vasquez, you've shown that letter and appreciate sort of the context of it. The first sentence says specifically, for the purpose of developing outline plans, which seems to be pretty explicit that it was intended to be used at that level, um, and maybe updated at that level at that time, um, it doesn't say for ASP. So how are you seeing um, the connection between the ASP and, and this letter, which was specific to the purpose of outline plans?
The context of it is, we couldn't get, we couldn't go before you to get an approval on an outline plan uh, until we did the ASP. Or sorry, until we did the geotechnical. You might ask administration the same thing, why did you require a quarter million dollars worth of bank studies at the ASP level? Because I thought we weren't interested in that level of detail, but they were.
Okay, and then just, just around, uh, around the, the flooding issue and sort of top of bank stability. Um, obviously, you've, the person has probably the most sort of on-the-ground knowledge in that area. Um, did you see any significant flooding in the twenty eighteen, where we, we had quite a bit backed up along uh, the intersection of a hundred and thirty-second and one hundred and sixteenth?
Yeah.
Um, did you see much in, in the sort of parcels that would run through, run through here?
Yes, yes, in this area, let me grab a graphic, this is probably the best one. In this area, there was significant flooding. Um, this geotechnical report, by the way, took into consideration the most recent provincial government flood mapping of the creek. Um, and this area here, this line is not the flood way, it's the flood fringe, meaning there's no active movement of water. And it did in fact, uh, yeah, this is it here, and it did in fact, uh, originally, this is, this is a, this line here is the flood way, meaning there's active movement of water. This one here is much farther out, as you can see, that's the flood fringe that was identified in that report, and we in fact saw a lot of that at that last, you're right, Bill, uh, saw a lot of that. And we're happy to, to give that up, we don't want to uh, build anywhere near water.
Yeah.
But uh, but still, that can be used as amenities for ninety-nine percent of the time, uh, as long, you know, for soccer, whatever you want, but as long as you don't put any building in. Yeah, we've covered that off already.
Well, I, and I guess I just wonder about the, the impact of that flooding in twenty eighteen and the relevance of the twenty fourteen geotechnical study? Like is it, is, are you, is there a risk, I guess?
Did it go outside of that?
Well-
I see what you're saying.
Not, not necessarily about the flooding or the area that flooding would, you know, sort of encroach into, it's about the impact of water on soil. So I guess I'm wondering about how relevant the twenty fourteen study is, uh, from your perspective, considering we have had at least one instance of pretty significant flooding in that area.
Well, the flooding that occurred recently did not exceed the flood fringe identified in the, in the report in two thousand and fourteen. And you guys, you guys flew that, you were up there in your helicopter, you guys know all about it.
But do you know if it had an impact on the stability of the slope through this corridor?
Some of the, it did impact some of the slopes, particularly down uh, around uh, this area. But again, it is well within the setbacks, some of these wider setbacks are forty meters. The original um, geotech, the original ASP is ten meters, just to put that in perspective. Albeit that was a different era, I mean, you can't really use that, but, but um, we, we didn't see or hear anything that implied that what occurred in eighteen invalidated either the geotechnical or the flood report, but are willing to accept the second, we have already accepted the second sentence of this that says in ten, you know, whenever we go ahead, uh, I think it's probably be done at subdivision time, because that's the last process. And something might change in between outline and subdivision, we would be willing to accept that this has to be updated. Hopefully, you won't make us redo the whole things, cause you know, it doesn't geologic, the creek doesn't change path, that takes geological time. But uh, it, it expands its boundaries in the sense that a flood can change it, but, but uh, we're willing to accept that. We just, the, the administration just didn't wanna put any reference to the geotechnical study after, on one hand, forcing us to spend a quarter million dollars to get it. And you shouldn't have asked us to get it.
Sure. I don't see anybody else in the queue, uh, council, except for Councilor Bressi.
Thank you. Uh, my last question is something that administration raised concerns about, but I didn't hear from you, so I'd like to hear your thoughts on, is these swing sites, these commercial potential that might change with market condition? Can you talk to me a little bit about what your views are there, uh, what, if the administration's suggestion is that we don't have swing sites in here, what you think about that? Just tell me a little bit about that.
Well, you know, I've lived here my whole life, I remember when um, govern, uh, who was it, it would have been Roman Chuck. He put, uh, you know, we need to do all this multi-family site in Patterson Place and Mission Heights and all that. And then it was all later converted to housing. My point is, swing sites are good, not bad, they may not be good to planners, but they're great to the economy and to, and the taxpayers, because we have, even now, we have all these multi-family sites that were forced upon the developers that are not getting used and will never, ever get used, there's just too many of them. So I don't see the administration's uh, concern about them. They say, well, it impacts servicing, and it does to a degree, and it impacts traffic volumes, and it does to a degree. But it doesn't in the context of which I think they're trying to put forward. Um, we think the city, I think you, you should allow us to have those swing sites, and in fact, if you wanna be business friendly, you should encourage more swing sites. It really doesn't cause any problem that they say it does. For instance, the one next to Day Bar, that was orig, you know, there, you know, we did one in nineteen ninety-five, that was originally a multi-family site. And then it, it went to single family. Remember, most of these, a lot of these swing sites, they get downgraded, not upgraded. So if it's commercial, it's gonna have more impact on traffic and roads, or sorry, traffic and sewers than going the other way. So I don't know why they're concerned, if nothing else, it is getting better, not worse.
Just on, on, I want to make sure that I'm understanding the proposed amendment correctly. Uh, map eight shows sort of the generalized future land uses, and there's only one site that is labeled a school slash park site. Um, the one that sort of was in the center of the plan on the central west side, um, the MR site there, is that still proposed to be a shared school site? Or is that a, it just isn't labeled that way on the map? And so I just want to make sure that I.
Yes.
Yeah, it is?
Yes.
Okay. So it's just labeled differently than the one that's on the north side, north end? I'm looking on map eight.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. They are, they're both meant to be school sites. One is shared with our neighbors and one is wholly ours.
Okay. And so that's, so that's just a mapping error? So I, and I don't see anybody in, uh, with any additional questions. Gentlemen, do you want to have any last closing comments to conclude?
Yeah, I guess, um, you know, it'd be easy tonight for you guys. Um, you can send us on our way if you don't approve it, because we're not going to proceed. I, there are just too, we've spent so much money. Uh, um, we've, you, you shouldn't worry about parks. There's a hundred and twenty-nine acres, you know, just think, how are you not going to have enough park space with a hundred and twenty-nine acres in one subdivision? Um, in top of bank, um, that is the actual practical only place to put a top of bank road. If you put it along, you know, you sound to grab your own aerial photo, you put it along these portions of the land where it's just essentially Bear Creek, skinny's down to next to nothing. How exciting is that going to be to drive along anyway? Um, the bridge crossing, uh, it's all about linkages now. What created that change was the hospital is now south of it, south of that land mass, and it used to be north in, in, um, Henry Hamm subdivision. And finally, we conceded that we're not asking for city funding of the bridge. We're just asking that they help see if there's any funding out there. But, um, we need to win these four tonight for us to be willing to go forward with the outline plan, because I won't spend a quarter million bucks. Otherwise, it's too expensive. And, uh, and then you guys, uh, there's other, ultimately, you guys are the proven authorities. I mean, we have lots of things in the other outline plan that, that we couldn't hang our hat on, or sorry, in the other ASP that we couldn't hang our hat on. So I mean, who knows what's going to happen when we come to you with an outline plan. But, but we need this level, the business needs this level of certainty to be able to go to the next step, and in the absence of that, we'll just stop. And because we went as far as we can with, uh, uh, administration, it became a tipping firm, and they just said, no, we're done. And so he said, well, we're done too.
Okay.
That's it.
Gentlemen, thanks for those closing comments. We didn't have enough time, Councilor Clayton, for you to get your question previous to their close. Councilor Clayton, by all means, ask your question. We would hate for you.
You know, there's the four key items that you addressed. However, there appears to be a couple of other things, school site size, um, parks specifically. Would it, um, be considered favorable to you if council tonight were to, um, table this? And I know initially you may have concern with that. Um, but I think that there, in my opinion, there's more than just those four key items in this ASP that need to be addressed. And if there was an opportunity for, um, you as a, a community stakeholder and, uh, administration and council to, um, you know, come to something that is more favorable for everybody, I think that's the best outcome from tonight. So I'm curious on your thought on that.
I started our negotiations with administration. I don't know who we would even phone in the city to talk to.
Thanks, Councilor Clayton. Gentlemen, thanks for being here this evening to make the presentation. Certainly appreciate you answering all our questions, even the ones that come in at the very end. Uh, we appreciate you being here this evening. So, uh, we're still in our public hearing, and I would ask if there's anyone else who wish to speak in support of the proposed amendments? Is there anyone else here this evening who wish to speak in support of the proposed Hidden Valley ASP amendments? Was there anybody else? Uh, I don't see anybody coming forward. Then I will ask if there was anybody who wished to speak in opposition to the proposed ASP amendments? Sure, come on down. I'll just ask you to introduce yourself, so we make sure that we have your name, um, for legislative service or for our city clerk. Um, and welcome. Welcome.
Mayor, council, I think you're providing this opportunity. My name is, uh, Joshua Quaid. I live at one-two-three-zero-two-one-zero-seven-A Street in the Royal Oaks, just adjacent to the apartment complex into the north. A bit of my background, I am a new landowner of Grand Prairie. I bought here in December, um, and it's, it's great, love it, but I've worked here for the last ten years and around the area, so I'm quite familiar.
We finally got you.
Yeah, finally got me. I, I work in forestry and environmental services, and I have an honors degree in environmental sciences and two diplomas in environmental technology. Just a bit of a background for where I come from. And I passed around a piece of paper. It's more of a letter of, of just something I'd like to, to explain. Um, the ASP, uh, we have in front of us, it has both macro and micro views, and has some, you know, further details that, uh, that maybe they don't normally have, and, and also has the ASP view. And I just wanted to bring up, uh, that point about, uh, about the green space and the reduction. You know, a lot of that, that creek is, is, is nice to have as green space, but a lot of it is, is a creek and, and can't be fully functionable as an environmental reserve or, or musical reserve, you know? We've heard it referred to a couple of times as, you know, a lot of it's a ditch or, you know, steep bank, and I don't, you know, though it is nice and it aids, um, ecological functions and so on and so forth. It can't be enjoyed as thoroughly as, as other features or other parks. And, and yeah, just coming back to my letter here, I'll kind of read it. It says, "Dear councilors, parks and open spaces are some of the most important distinguishing features of the city. These areas create character and enhance unique sense of place." Is my, in my opinion, at the, you know, Hidden Valley Ranch lands, I guess the ASP, but in particular the, uh, the ranch itself. East of Bear Creek is a, is a particularly unique landmark in the northwest core of the city and a defining feature of Royal Oaks, North Ridge and Arbor Hills communities. And coming back to the, uh, the ASP, um, some of the, the more detailed parts of it outline multi-family residential and single-family residential and around the ranch site. And so I'll, I'll focus on that before kind of elaborating on other parts. So it says, "In both the current ASPs, um, much of the area north, People's Church and east of the Hidden Valley Ranch Estate specifically, has been identified as multi-family residential. And I feel that, you know, this designation will severely impact the natural scenic aesthetic and agricultural value of the land and change the character of the surrounding neighborhoods. I'd recommend to the council that we embrace the, the natural capital that this area provides and preserve from development, in particular, the fenced area around, uh, around the estate commonly known as the horse pasture. You know, we, we have a deficiency of, of green space or environmental reserve in that plan, and that could be a good opportunity for us to, to mop up that number." Yeah, and, uh, two practical ways of doing this, um, you know, we could build on the success of Muskegon Park and include it in the Masqueta, Muskegon City Park North plans. You know, it's prime flat land. That would be a deal for, you know, returning to natural grassland habitat or, you know, you know, and then give it an opportunity to, to complement Grand Prairie's namesake, you know, some nice, nice prairie land, or develop however we see fit, but it is some of that, that prime land that can be enjoyed by, by all of us in the neighborhood, um, as opposed to, you know, the steep banks of, of the creek. And then another option for that area would be in tender agreements with the landowner and maintain the agricultural designation of, uh, the land in perpetuity. And, uh, to preserve and reflect Grand Prairie's culture and heritage within the urban boundaries. Um, you know, both these, both these avenues kind of address, you know, increasing that, uh, that ER and MR. Um, you know, Cospect Avenue to preserve, you know, those ranch lands or pasture lands in particular. Would be, you know, increasing or adhering to the, uh, MR and ER in the original ASP. Negotiating conservation easements with the landowner of the property, you know, land stewardship agreements with the landowner of the property, or even conservation directives from the, via the Alberta Land Stewardship Act. So, you know, the, the hearing here and, uh, and the repeal and replacement of the Hidden Valley ASP provides us with a unique opportunity for nurturing character and quality to existing landscape and enhance ecological integrity and preserve distinctive features of the city, and I think we should really capitalize upon that. I guess, you know, we spoke a lot about what is and what isn't cost-effective, but we never really discussed like the natural cavity that the capital of the scenery, uh, and the landscape entails. And if it's not cost-effective development now, then we could just push it down the road and develop it later when it is more cost-effective to preserve those features. And that's kind of what I'd say. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Quaid, for being here. Uh, any opportunity for questions from council? Any questions for the delegation? Councilor Friesen?
Thank you. Uh, thank you, Mr. Quaid, for your presentation and, uh, and your thoughtfulness of Grand Prairie's unique features and, and the beauty that is in that area, for sure. I'm just curious, have you discussed this at all with the landowner?
I have not been in contact with the landowner. I've, uh, pulled a title search, and I believe it's a company name, Alberta Land something.
Okay, so this is the first that?
Yeah, this is just me putting an idea forward and, uh, and hopefully gain some traction. I, I think the neighborhood, um, greatly appreciates, you know, the ranch and, uh, the ranch lands and the pasture lands. And, you know, maybe we could somehow equate that to contributing towards, you know, green space in some way. It's a possibility.
Thank you.
Thanks, Councilor Friesen. Any other questions for the delegation? Don't see anybody in the queue. It looks like you might get off light, Mr. Quaid. Certainly appreciate you being here and the, uh, time that you took to develop a presentation for council. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Is there anyone else, uh, here this evening who wish to speak, uh, in opposition to the proposed amendments to the Hidden Valley ASP? Is there anyone else who wish to speak in opposition? Is there anyone else who you wish to speak, uh, to this item at all before we move on from the presentation submission portion of our public hearing? Okay, I don't see anybody rushing the stage. Uh, so this would be a last opportunity, council, before we move into voting and business arising. Uh, this would be our opportunity for questions from administration, uh, before we close the public hearing. Councilor Palat?
Uh, thanks, Mayor Givens. I'm just wondering, I'm going back to this thirty-five percent top of bank and, you know, maybe asking for clarification from administration, but, you know, according to the presentation there, uh, by Bearstone, Mr. Vasquez, there was three hundred and seventy-five meters. It would be ten percent, so there's another nine hundred and thirty-seven meters that would just be the twenty-five percent. I'm just hoping I'm, I'm heckering up my numbers on that. I'm wondering if we've done the, any math on what that would be potentially for loss revenue for the city. Um, the reason I'm saying that is, you know, I can appreciate that, but we're going to create a lot of urban, we, we talk about urban sprawl, but in a way, we'd be actually creating urban sprawl by, by not allowing homes in this area, because homes are going to have to go somewhere. So now we've basically stagnated some land and, you know, I've kind of run my numbers, but I'm just wondering if administrations around any numbers on what that would be for lost revenue if, uh, if we didn't have that top of bank setback at thirty-five percent.
Mr. Rush?
Thank you. Through the mayor, um, we haven't done that calculation. I haven't been shown that drawing before. My impression is that the homes could be on the other side of the road, so we wouldn't be losing any of the lots, really. The road would be adjacent to, uh, municipal reserve space or environmental easement. Provide public access to that, and so that difference in land area would just be on the other side of the road.
So in essence, we'd have a road with only one person paying taxes on it instead of two people paying taxes on it each side. So if an infrastructure needs to get replaced down the road, we'd only have, well, we'd have half the people paying into that infrastructure potentially on that road. And just speaking from, you know, I guess we could ask realtors, different people, but being across from a feature versus backing onto the feature substantially changes the value of your home, which would substantially change the amount of taxes we'd collect on that home versus backing onto a road. Backing onto an ER space or MR space versus fronting onto it. Um, so I'm just, I guess for me, it's a consideration. I love to see, we've been talking a lot of budget about where we find money. And I feel like we could be leaving hundreds of thousands of dollars potentially of revenue on the table here, and that's, that's a major concern for me moving forward. So, um, I, I guess.
Maybe we'll save that for discussion and debate.
But I guess for, you know, I just, for, it would be nice for administration if we could come back with a number, understanding that, because I think art of planning to me, and, and would be nice to have that analytics on it. And so I would just ask, you know, my own two bits, if it would be nice when we looked at that in the future, if we consider what the actual financial is, because in the report, it says there's no financial, uh, risks. And I consider that a pretty big financial risk myself, so.
Thanks, Councilor Palat. Councilor Bressi?
Great. Thank you, Mayor Givens. A question for administration, going to the discussion about the geotechnical report. I'm just wondering if you could give me a little bit of history on the geotechnical requirements from administration's side? And also, um, if you could just give me a little bit, a little bit more information about why with that letter saying that more work might need to be done with subdivision, at the time of subdivision, why there's a concern about that being referenced in here?
Ms. Donnelly?
Through the chair. Um, so this area has been looked at, nineteen years was the indication. Back at that time, the city had a single process. It was just ASPs. Um, it was after that, we've now gone to the two-step process of ASPs and outline plans. And that was to allow for the, uh, ASPs having not as much detail and as cost in, in doing that work, with the outline plan being the opportunity to really dig into the engineering and technical stuff, which tends to, to cost more money to do those studies. So at the time that, um, the, the, this letter was drafted and that there was two, I believe, two outline plans that were being drafted and, and worked on. And so it was being, uh, kind of in reference to that. And in saying that, um, I, I think that it's a really good information that's there and available and useful. Uh, typically what we find is that over time, and as the subdivisions come in, the land developer goes back to the geotechnical, um, professional that did that and has them go out to the site, take a look, and they'll write a letter that will stick at the front, and it will indicate if there's been any changes, um, along the banks or anything that suggests any change to the recommendations. If there's nothing that's happened, uh, in that period of time, they'll generally just write us a letter saying that, uh, um, based on their investigation, everything is sufficient to continue with the recommendations that are provided in that geotechnical. So we need to check back in, um, as slopes possibly see toe erosion and, um, from, from flooding, or, um, if there's some sort of slope failure that occurs. Then it, it's just a check-in that occurs throughout the, the development process. Um, I would hope we'd never have to go back and redo it, but if that original or geo, or if a subsequent geo is not able to use the material, then that, that would be when we'd be asked for additional work. Typically, those tests are pretty good. Uh, they, they drill, the drills and the holes and the work they do, uh, lasts for quite a long time. We try to get them to look fifty years out when doing the report, but they put that disclaimer in there, and so we just need to check back. So that helps.
And if I could ask a follow-up question for that. Uh, you said that often the same person that did it goes out and recertifies it. What happens if that person's no longer available, they've moved away, or they've retired? Is, uh, is another expert able to go out and give that certification? If yeah, it's all still good?
Song?
Through the chair. Um, so they will go back, um, and they will typically use that information. They might look for some supplementary, uh, information. But, uh, there's, the GOs generally will utilize, um, all of the information that's been provided. So yes, you can get other geotechnicals, but they, they likely will need to reread everything and, and make more effort to familiarize themselves with it, whereas the original would already be familiar. So that's just been my experience that, that the original does it, but it's not required.
Questions for administration? Councilor Palat?
Thanks, Ken, Mayor Givens. Um, I'm just wondering, you know, when, when we talked about, um, the, the bridge, and I kind of, I'd asked the, the people here, uh, Grant and Bearstow voted, but I'm just kind of wondering from administration if the wording was changed, to say if a percentage of development was completed or a number, number of vehicle counts was acquired, that we'd be funding it. Is, is that, is wording like that, um, hurting? Like, I'm just trying to understand how that could potentially hurt the city, because we, we, we talked about not wanting to have the risk of that. I'm just wondering if that kind of wording could be added into this? And if it could be added in, then I think we could probably maybe, you know, help achieve one of these, one of these four things, I'd at least.
Rush?
Thank you. Through the mayor, um, funding isn't covered under ASPs. It's not something that you would put in that. It would come later in the process.
And I appreciate that, but I, I guess the wording in this and, and is he's worried about going ahead with an outline plan, and I can appreciate that, because it's a lot of money to spend if it's not going to be possible. Just wondering if there could be wording put in as a condition or a term of this, that once there's certain amount of density built out in that area, or once there's a certain traffic count met, that the city would look at a, a, a funding model for that. I don't, I'm just trying to understand what the risk to the city would be to put that wording in there.
Uh, and that may be Ms. Donnelly?
Just take a crack at that one. Um, I think that it's, it's, when we're looking at roads and transportation and how they're funded, frequently what we look at, who benefits? So if you want to talk about wording around figuring who benefits and how the cost sharing occurs, um, occurs, when it happens is, is, you know, a phasing thing. I think that if you want to look at this, it should probably be done at the point of benefit, you know, versus staging, because stages are not in the area structure plan. And funding, if you wanted to start something with that, might be the better direction, is my suggestion.
So, Ms. Donnelly, are you suggesting then that if anything on this, that it would be more appropriate, that it would talk more about a share or commitment to work with others on it rather than a trigger specific to that? Is that what you're saying? Is that, yeah? Any other questions for administration? Councilor Palat, go ahead.
Just in the presentation earlier, I appreciate it was quick and you were trying to take all this in, but you talked specifically about swing sites and the risk. Would you mind just popping that slide back up or maybe walking us through what, understand risk to industry versus risk to the city and appreciate it's a balancing act? Again, what are the big risks for the city on that one?
Mr. Drosch.
Sure. So it's not a huge risk. The, in this case, the two uses are significantly different, so from commercial to residential. The challenge here is the purpose of the ASP is to give us an idea of what the land uses are going to be, and if you don't know, then you're not really ready for the ASP. So when we go to later stages for an outline plan or things like that, we don't know what to expect from the sites and how to interpret design reports or what the impact on transportation is going to be. And it also impacts decisions about areas outside of the plan area. So when we're considering the transportation network for the wider city in the areas adjacent to it, we consider the land uses stipulated in the ASPs. The other challenge is how the actual swing sites were integrated into this plan. In older plans, we have them and they're clearly identified as swing sites. And in the text, that's a lot, a lot clearer. And also on the map, they're designated separately, whereas in this case, they just changed the commercial designation for all properties within the plan area to commercial potential. We had requested that they change it to have a separate designation and leave the other commercial sites as just commercial, but they weren't open to that change.
Along that same sort of path, so does that mean, so I'm looking at map eight in the development concept, where the red sites are the commercial sites. It looks like a significant number of the commercial sites that are now would be, under this proposal, would be changed to commercial potential are actually on the south portion. Am I, and that's the part, that parcel is actually not owned by the applicant, is it?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, no, the southern portion is not owned by the applicant. Those are college lands, and the challenge is that, yes, it inadvertently designates every single commercial parcel as commercial potential, which is very confusing.
So do we know whether the college was consulted on that change or if they have a position on that, potential versus commercial?
They were circulated on the application and the proposed changes, they did not submit any comments.
Any other questions for administration? Mr. Drosch, I had one, I, do you know how many times, so the plan was originally adopted in 2000, I believe, that was referenced a couple of times. How many times has the plan been amended since 2000?
I, Mr. Mayor, I don't know for sure, though the bylaw numbering were at F, so it would have gone from A through F, I believe, so. So this would be the Sixth Amendment, I believe, and there were previously outline plans submitted, and those applications were closed due to inactivity.
So this plan has seen amendments over the years. It's not as though the plan has stagnated since 2000?
Correct.
Any other questions for administration? Councilor Thieson.
Thank, thank you very much, Mayor Given. Mr. Drosch, I'm just curious, something Counselor Palat a bit alluded to in regards to the top of bank. So let's say this plan passes and we go with a 10% top of bank, and I would imagine that would achieve an ability to build houses on the other side of the street closest to the riverbank, like to the top of bank, so they could build houses on both sides. What is the approximate distance that the backyard line would be to the River Valley in a situation such as that? Would it be 10 meters? Would it be 15? Would it be 20 meters? Five meters? And I guess the reason why I ask that question is, is because I hear repeatedly over and over and over again, especially when you look at the Mission Heights developments that are up at the top of the bank. So many people have told me over the years before I got involved in municipal government and while I've been in municipal government, you have to protect those, those top of banks and that it actually wrecks the view for the people that are enjoying the River Valley. So I'm trying to imagine in my head how close that might be with the proposed 10% right or 10% setback on the, on the road if we were to build houses on the other side of it.
Mr. Drosch, is that knowable at this stage?
I'm sorry, I'm not clear on the question. Are you referring to whether the, not the distance if homes are built directly adjacent to the top of bank or on the opposite side of a road?
Well, okay, so the, the road that we were shown on the map earlier that I don't have the privilege to bring up, but where they have their 10% top of bank, if they were to be able to achieve that, you'd be able to build roads or houses on both sides of the road, and one would be on the side of the road with the, with the River Valley, with the back of the house facing it. But of course, houses have backyard setbacks, side yard setbacks. I'm just trying to imagine like how close to that River Valley it may encroach. Like, are we talking like a couple meters? Are we talking still 20, 15 meters? Like, how far back approximately could it, could it be, I guess?
Through the mayor, there's a whole, of a lot of variability in those distances based on safety considerations of where it's safe to build. That's done through the detailed geotechnical work, usually at the OP stage.
Yeah, okay, that's, that's, I guess, answers well enough.
Councilor Palat.
Thanks, Mayor Given. I'm just curious on the, on the school sites. Looking out there, there's, there's basically two large school sites identified, but we also on 132nd have across the road have already got high school up and I believe other school sites there. I'm just wondering, is it normal to basically have a school site in every quarter? Because that's in essence what we'd be doing is we'd almost have two school sites, four school sites potentially in this area when there's a lot of land already dedicated around it. Are we worried that we may be over dedicated for school sites here?
Thank you, through the mayor. The initial proposal for the amendment was to eliminate one of the school sites, and so we circulated these school boards and they responded that they wanted these sites to remain in the plan area, that they needed them.
And I can appreciate that the schools probably were never going to say they have enough land, but I'm just wondering from the city's perspective, at what point do we think we've allocated enough land? I just don't want to see land sit dormant like that. You know, it's, it's sad to see that in other municipalities I drive through where land sat vacant for 15, 20 years and it's a field that's kind of stagnated and can't be repurposed at that point. So outside of the schools' assessment of what they think they need, what's the city's position of whether they think they have enough school sites or not?
Another planner with the department had done an analysis and worked with the school sites. I would have to refer back to that study. My impression is that it supported the school board's request. There was identification of needs such as for a new Francophone site in that area of the city and anyway, the, the study, I believe, indicated that there was a need for those sites, but I would have to verify.
Any other questions for administration? Mr. Drosch, I just wanted to ask a question, I guess, about this 35% top of bank road. That requirement or that number, I guess, comes from the municipal development plan. Can the city, what happens when we adopt an area structure plan that actually is contrary to the municipal development plan or, or in the municipal development plan? Is that 35% top of bank road a, is it optional? Is it a shall or is it a may? So can the ASP be contrary to the MDP? Or does the MDP provide enough flexibility that council has the authority to change it?
So DMJ requirements are that ASPs follow the standards in an MDP and any policies in there? I would have to double check the exact wording. I believe it's a shall.
I'd see, Mr. Johnson.
Thank you, Mayor Given. The, the policy does read as a shall. I can offer a little bit of background on this policy if council would be interested in that.
Other councils, I just, just confirm so that in the MDP, it does, it is a shall?
It is a shall statement. I can, I can either put up the clause right here. I have it highlighted in the municipal development plan. Scott, are you able to pull that up?
Sure. And, and Ms. Johnson, maybe if you just want to highlight what year or when the MDP was most recently amended, I guess?
The MDP was adopted in 2010.
When was it last amended?
I'm not sure of an amendment, but it would not have touched this particular clause.
Okay, go ahead.
So the background discussion in including this clause was, as noted in the statement, that it's to maximize public access and views into the Bear Creek Valley as a natural amenity, visual resource and public open space valued by the community at large. During the municipal development plan review, discussions with residents and, and council contained a number of comments that Counselor Thieson hit on when he mentioned the area around Mission, where some parts of it, there is more top of bank road and connections to the park in the north area of Mission Heights, and in the south area, it's predominantly backyards. And so that was the clause that was put in to promote the design that we would see in the more northern part of Mission Heights. Some additional points that have been discussed this evening with respect to, can you take off my screen for a second, please? So in the presentation, there was the, the more detailed development concept that the applicant put up. It's, it's important to note a few things. One, based on, we hadn't seen that before, but based on my review and some of the statements that they made, I think there's some misinterpretation of how that would actually work in that they said that that's what 10% looks like. And when the map initially went up, I thought, whoa, that looks really good. But that's 10% of the total plan area, both sides crammed into one side. So I would say that at that, even with that 10%, that's misinterpreted. And so in that sense, we wouldn't be getting even close to 10% because by the time the entire plan area would be built out, then the entire, the other side of the creek would, could potentially have zero. So there's, there's a bit of a challenge there. And at the risk of going out on a limb here with the, with the municipal, municipal development plan containing the shall statement, when the outline plan comes in, it's certainly not administration's position that we would ask for the AutoCAD drawings and do a measurement of the top of bank and run the math and, and make a measurement. We're looking to achieve certain intentions that the municipal development plan laid out, which is overall access, a neighborhood amenity and so on. And so I would be very concerned to say that we would go down to 10% without having any look at the outline plan and seeing what that looks like. Furthermore, I would be concerned with employing that discretion that I just mentioned, going down to 10%. But my point simply being that we don't look for an exact measurement at 35%. We're looking more for intent. And then finally, with respect to Counselor Palat's comment about lost revenue, the majority, the, the way that this top of bank road could be made up is by putting a park adjacent to the park. So you have a little bit of park space, maybe there's enough room for some features, maybe not. But the point is, is that there, there is MR space, and that's MR space that may be used elsewhere in the neighborhood. So to have the position that there's any time you have a single fronting road, i.e. a house on one side and not a house on the other side is lost revenue, would be akin to saying that we should never have park frontage, period. Because to provide parks, you will have a single frontage situation. And so I think that's the few points that I just wanted to add some clarity on that top of bank because it was subject to a lot of discussion this evening.
Thanks, Mr. Johnson. And I'm just looking at doing my letters on the MDP, looking at the amendments. It looks like there were 14 amendments going by alphabet. Is that, am I interpreting that right?
I would trust the numbering system that Legislative Services has. A number of those amendments may be due to land use amendments, like if a developer proposed to change an area from industrial to residential or what have you. So there have been certainly a number of amendments, but I'm 99% sure that this is one that has not been touched.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Palat.
Mayor Given, just, I guess, when we're talking about the MDP and the shell for 2010, do we know what, what, what the number was pre-2010? Like, if it was at 35%, can you give me an idea when it was in 2009 or before that switch?
Mr. Johnson.
Thank you, Mayor Given. To the best of my recollection, I don't believe there was a policy. However, it would certainly be within sound planning principles to, to look for that and negotiate that through an outline plan process, but there was no MDP policy that provided administration with that direction or some leverage to actually, to get that. So it was, it's something that we would have always had on our radar, but this was certainly a policy that would have strengthened our position.
Appreciate maybe nobody from administrations hear from that era, but where did we get to 35%? If we went from kind of maybe zero to 30, like, how did we get from zero to 35 potentially?
Well, Mr. Johnson was actually there, as was I. It was Mayor Logan's counsel that adopted that MDP. But I certainly remember the discussion, Mr. Johnson might actually, and I believe that there were specific reports around this, this issue over the years. Johnson?
Thank you, Mayor Given. To the best of my recollection, I believe we looked at a number of neighborhoods and thought, okay, what, what looks good? What's reasonable? And certainly, there are some shining examples around town and some, like the Twisties, which was brought up, that would likely far exceed 35%. The northeast part of Mission Heights might be right around there. So I, I think it was a bit of a mixture of reviewing what neighborhoods and areas look good and coming up with somewhat of a nice, clean number.
So, one other question, sir. Since 2010 has been adopted, have we approved an ASP and has somebody developed an ASP that has 35%?
Mr. Johnson?
Thank you, Mayor Given. To my recollection, no.
So I'll leave it at that and...
Are there any other questions for administration at this stage? Seeing none, council, this will be your last opportunity. We may get in discussion, debate, and there'll be something that you will wish that you had asked administration. Seeing none, then I will close the public hearing. We'll move on to business arising, and I would look for a motion for first reading, which we need to do in any case so that we can get on to discussion and debate. Can I have a motion for first reading, please? Councilman Hoss.
Thank you, Mayor Given. I need to get that. Yeah, I move the council give the first, first reading to by law, see 1390 being Hidden Valley ASP and...
And that's it? First reading, so no discussion or debate on first reading? This allows us to get it on the table, so we might debate it at second reading. Please vote on first reading. Thank you. That motion carries. Can I have a motion for second reading, Councilman Hoss?
I move the, give the second reading to C 1390, Hidden Valley YA, Hidden Valley ASP.
Thanks, Councilman Hoss. So we're open for discussion, debate on second reading? Council members, any discussion or debate on second reading? Counselor Palat.
Thanks, Mayor Given. I'm just wondering if, if somebody from administration could give me an option of what it would look like if we didn't want to continue this conversation tonight? I really want to support a lot of the things that administration's done here, but I think there's a lot of good claims and, and things that have been made by Mr. Vaskovich and Bearstone, and I don't, I don't want to see this just die on second reading and then this process is done for a while. I'm just wondering if administration, you know, what their options would be of how we could proceed with this. I'm just wondering if administration, you know, what their options would be of how we could proceed with this to move forward with it, heading back to a committee or whatever that would look like.
So, I will appreciate that that's not actually a public hearing question about the content. It's a process question. So, probably still appropriate here rather than at the questions for administration stage. Is there a response from administration on alternatives for council? Councillor Plott, is that a fair way to characterize your question? Alternatives for council at this stage? You know, is there anything other than approve, defeat? Mr. Drosh?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, in a public hearing through the MGA, the three options are approve, defeat, or approve with amendments. So, for the actual public hearing process, there isn't that option. There may be potential to recess the hearing, but it isn't a bylaw that administration has created. So, if you give us direction to go back, we can't make amendments. It's not our bylaw.
It was a proposal from an external applicant.
Yes.
That administration has accepted and brought, sorry, that administration has brought forward to council to judge. And council can amend that proposal from the external applicant. Counsel can approve or reject that proposal. Is that a, that was the first, that was the first thing that I said. Is that, is that correct, Mr. Drosh?
Yes.
So, I will also offer that I think, I think we need to be cautious about amendments. These are relatively technical documents. They certainly aren't to the technical level of detail of an outline plan, but they are relatively technical documents with, that I am not sure that council is fully equipped to have enough detail to be able to propose good amendments at this stage. If council, we have closed the public hearing, right? So, when we close the public hearing, if there are substantive changes, then it would need to come back for a new public hearing because that public hearing has been closed. My advice would be if council is interested in the negotiation of this or some of the specific items that were proposed, then the path that is most open to us may actually be to follow administration's recommendation of defeating second reading and directing administration to waive any fees should the applicant choose to reapply. I think that is probably the best way to get a clean, well-done ASP and indicate that council is supportive of the development. But other than that, I think, as Mr. Drosh said, it really is approve, reject, or amend on the fly, which I personally would not support amending on the fly, given the level of technical expertise that I have. Councillor Clayton?
Thanks, Mayor Given. I guess in regards to process, personally, I think that I would be prepared to address a couple of the asks from the applicant. And if a couple of the asks need to go back for further discussion, that's fine. I just don't know, process-wise, how you'd like me to split this out.
Well, there were a significant number of amendments proposed, and I guess I would look to administration. So, what the package that we have of bylaw C-1390 is actually, as administration highlighted, not an amendment itself, it's an entire plan. So, we could amend 1390 to say whatever on whatever point, and that would mean that all of the other items are still in there as proposed, including mapping inconsistencies and other more minor details. So, if we propose this plan with amendments, we better make sure that we get them all right or we're going to be accepting a plan with a bunch of inconsistencies that we might not otherwise typically approve. Councillor O'Toole?
Thank you very much, Mayor Given. I also understood that there were some requests that were premature in asking. It would be out the outline plan. So, maybe we need to, don't forget that either, I guess.
Any other discussion or debates? We have a motion for second reading on the floor. I can appreciate that this is challenging council, that we certainly wish to stay responsive to the development industry and to demonstrate that we wish to do that. And I have a sense that everybody also appreciates that this is, the plan has a lot more in it than just the four items, maybe that we all have on the top of our scorecard. Councillor O'Toole?
Mayor Given, I'd like to make a motion to table this. And I'd like to know if administration can give me a timeline, what they would feel comfortable with because there's some stuff here that is, it's very important. I'd like to see growth take place. And there's some still stuff that I'm still unaware of that I would like to see a little bit more information on.
So, I will let our city clerk talk about the difference between tabling and postponement and what's possible during a period of tabling. Thank you. Ms. Carvajal?
Thank you, Mayor Given. To table a motion to give second reading is out of order. Tabling a motion is a motion that's used within the course of this particular meeting to allow administration to do some work or to address a more important item, which we have no other items on our agenda at this time. To postpone this, it would have to be postponed to the next council meeting. And in order to take any action such as an amendment would be out of order since the hearing was held today.
So, just to clarify that, on a tabling motion or a post, so tabling motion would be within this meeting. A postponed consideration of second reading would be to a future meeting. And in either of those cases, new information couldn't be introduced because the public, through the public hearing process, wouldn't have an opportunity to comment because the public hearing has been closed. Councillor Plott?
Thanks, Mayor Given. I guess I'm going to learn lots about procedure here tonight, but I'm wondering if it would be out of line to refer this to our complex projects team with council and attendants. And to speak to that, I guess what I would like to see happen is for us to have a better conversation. It sounds like a proponent feels like he's exhausted our opportunities. I want to support administration. And I'm wondering if we put everybody in the same room, if we can just figure this out. And I'm not sure if that motion's out of line or not.
That would not be out of line after the conclusion of the public hearing and the business arising from the public hearing. So, we have a public hearing, and we have to have an outcome to that public hearing, one way or another.
So, I guess saying that, then it goes against my will-to degree, but I would maybe look that we defeat this on second motion. It doesn't look like we're going to get through this today with a bunch of amendments. So, that's not my hope by any means. But if there's no other way around this, if that's the will, I would love to have that happen and then us come out with a motion and make sure we get this thing back on the dance floor and we keep working on this because I don't think we want this to end this way. I don't think administration wants to go home feeling like they're not working with industry, and I certainly don't think it's good for us to not have industry want to work with administration. So, I'll see what the rest of council has to say, but I'll be looking at entertaining that motion.
Okay, thanks very much, Councillor Plott. Any other discussion or debate on second reading? Councillor Minhas?
Thank you, Mayor Given. If we defeated, then we'll come back in two weeks, like you said, then waive the fees and then they have the public hearing again?
No, I think, so if we defeat it, that would be done. And if council chose after the conclusion of that, that vote, council could choose to have any other motions that might arise on this topic. They wouldn't be related to, so the public hearing has been closed. The proposed amendment would be completed, either accepted or rejected. And then council, if it was rejected, council could say, but wait, we would like to direct administration to take other actions. I would have to concur with Councillor Plott. I think that's probably the most plausible, maybe the least satisfying, but probably the most plausible way for council to demonstrate that we continue to have desire to see this move forward and that we're willing to work with the applicant, but to be able also to bring to bear the technical expertise that's needed to make an appropriate amendment to an area structure plan that really impacts such an important part of our city. So, I would also encourage council to defeat second reading and to follow up with motions should the proposed ASP be defeated. Is there any other discussion or debate? I don't see anybody ringing in. Then I will call for the vote. Please vote on second reading. Okay, thank you. That motion does not carry. Do we need a motion to rescind? This has been defeated at second. So, now council would be the time to have any business arising. Councillor Plott?
Thanks, Mayor Given. I would like to make a motion that we refer this matter to our complex projects team. The reason I'm saying complex projects team is I think that's what it was intended for. It's already a committee or a team that we have in place that's worked on other items like this. My one request, though, was that we refer to the complex projects team with all of council present. I think it's very important that we're actively involved with this as it was brought to our attention. I think we need to be actively involved with this moving forward. So, that would be my motion, is that we refer this to the complex project team with all council present.
Would that then be a council committee of the whole? And, you know, invite the complex projects, because if all of council is dealing with a land development issue and it's all of council where there could be a majority consensus opinion reached in a, on a topic that might be the subject of a public hearing, that could be, we would have to be explicit. That's an open council public meeting, not a behind, not a, we wouldn't have the same latitude to negotiate that administration might have or the complex projects team might have directly with the developer.
I guess my concern with that is, you know, our proponent was very guided in this conversation, saying he feels like he's exhausted all things. I don't know if that's going to meet his intent, and that's a concern for me. I don't want to have a member of our community not feel like they can be in a room with our administration and have his voice heard. I'm not saying administration's not listening, I'm just saying that's a concern for me. So, you know, I'm just going to sit by for a minute here and see what the rest of my council colleagues have to say and see if somebody else has a better solution, and I'll withdraw my motion.
Councillor Pressley?
Thank you. I think, I think I struggle with this in terms of two reasons. One, I get the intent you've got with us sitting around a table with the complex projects team, but two concerns are either that's in a public venue, in which case it doesn't accomplish what you want anyways because they can't have that honest and full conversation, or else it's not in a public venue, and I just don't feel that that's appropriate for the conversation we're going to have. I think that the applicant has given us four, maybe three and a half, very concrete things where the applicant is on a complete loggerheads with administration, and I don't think that they're going to, actually, really, it's being asked, council come in and make this work. And I think that, I think that we need to find a course where we make a decision on those three and a half, four things, and then all the other issues, I think, could be figured out with administration and the applicant. But I, I think that council needs to have a council discussion on those kinds of demands that the applicant had before we can ask administration to do further work on this. And I don't think that happens at that complex project team. I think that works at a committee of the whole or at another committee structure. I think it needs to be a council-only discussion first. I think we've put what we need from administration, so I've decided a few key things.
Okay, thanks, Councillor Pressley. I don't see anybody else in the queue. Councillor Clayton?
So, it's on a different topic, but thanks, Mayor Given. I'd like to make a motion that council rescind any fees associated with the reapplication of the Hidden Valley Area Structure Plan.
Can you maybe say, direct administr, sorry, rescind, do you mean waive for any additional reapplications?
Yep.
Okay, so, direct administration waive any?
For reapplication for the Hidden Valley Area Structure?
Should the applicant choose to reapply?
You bet.
Okay. So, I think that motion's clear. So, direction to administration that should the applicant come forward with a new proposed amendment, that administration shall, should waive the fees for that. Councillor Clayton, was there a time, is there a timeline on that? Because it's not unlikely that there will be amendments to the Hidden Valley ASP at some point in the future. Was your intention within a period of time?
Let's say for 12 months.
Okay. So, we're all clear on that motion? Direction to administration, should the applicant reapply within 12 months, council's direction is to forego or waive the application fee. Councillor O'Toole?
I'm in full support of that. He mentioned a number of times that he's got over a couple million dollars invested in this project. Some of the things that were amendments were his choosing, and some were just because of surrounding area changes that wouldn't work in the previous outline plan. So, yes, I'm totally in support of this.
Thanks, Councillor O'Toole. Councillor Thiessen?
Thank you very much, Mayor Given. I too am in full support of this. I think for me, one of the biggest factors that I think as a council and as a developer and development community in the city of Grand Prairie that at least I think is the most important part is that Bear Creek corridor and ensuring that we protect it and preserve it. But I want to continue conversations and ensure that they're ongoing and that there's amenable changes if they, if we can all agree to that. I think a waiver of fees is a small pittance compared to what the money that's already been invested in this, and it's probably the least of what we can do if the developer wants to come back and reapply for another area structure plan after we've discussed what we feel as a council is important and after, I guess, administration has had a good talk with the applicant if they choose to reapply. So, that's a very small thing, and I think this is a very key point of land that we have to consider, which is what makes this decision so hard on everybody around this table. So, I'll support this wholeheartedly.
Thanks, Councillor Thiessen. Councillor Minhas?
Yes, I would support this motion too, but it's concerned about that because they have spent a lot of money and they want to move ahead. So, my question to the administration is somehow we got to start working with them sooner than later because my understanding, what I feel from them, they want to do something in that area. So, whatever give and take we have to do, we should think about it or council should get involved within, stay out with the administration.
Councillor Minhas? Any other discussion or debate? Seeing none, then I will call for the vote. Please vote. Thank you. That motion carries. Is there any other business arising related to this? Councillor Plott?
Thanks, Mayor Given. I'm just wondering, the best process of having a conversation about our municipal development plan is specifically around the 35% top-of-bank. I can really appreciate that we're trying to protect this corridor. I think it's great, but it should be a little bit concerning for our council that since it's been adopted, nobody's been able to pull off a development. And speaking that, I mean, I've ran lots of modeling on developments. You can't give away 35% of your best lots and make the math work. And so, I can really feel for the proponent on this. I think there's got to be a saw-off somewhere in here. 35% maybe is just a little bit too big of a bite. And so, I'm wondering how we have a conversation with that. You know, are we asking to reopen the MDP? I'm like, I'm just, I'm wondering how we can deal with that because at some point, we're going to have to, if we wanted to accept this, it breaks the MDP currently. And so, it's pretty hard for administration to support something that breaks the MDP, and I think it's pretty hard for council to support that. So, I may be looking for some suggestions from the rest of council on how we could potentially do that because I think we have to have that conversation at some point. And I think it's, it's, we can't move anything forward without that. So, you know, to get Mr. Vaskovich back to the table, I think we have to show him we're willing to have that conversation and that we may be willing to relax on that, but at least that we have to have a conversation about it.
Sure. I see the director. I would just also say that the idea that nobody has been able to make a development work with a 35% since it was passed might be challenging. I think a better question would be, have any developments adjacent to the Musqueve Park corridor been proposed since the MDP was passed with that requirement? I think the majority of ESPs, because there have been a lot of houses built in Grand Prairie, just haven't happened to be adjacent to Bear Creek corridor. So, there are only so many parcels, so many developments that'll be affected by this. So, I think the idea that this 35% So I think the idea that this 35% requirement has sterilized parcels of land is, and based on the fact that there hasn't been any land developed, you know, that's utilized this, there hasn't been any land that I can think of since 2010 other than Grand Banks developed adjacent to Musk C P Park Corridor. So I see the Director of Infrastructure and Economic Development.
Thank you, Mayor Given. An opportunity to review this is going to naturally come up with the MDP review that is anticipated within the next year or so. We're hoping to do it immediately following the IDP, and it's running a little bit along with the county and the ICF negotiations that are currently ongoing. However, this is also something that could be directed to an appropriate standing committee for administration to bring back a review of this particular section.
Thanks for that advice and the reminder that the MDP is actually underneath the IDP and that they end and so on and so on. Counselor Plott.
So I'll make a motion that we direct administration to come back to the appropriate standing committee, report around the 35% top of bank setback, so council can have a conversation about that. I can appreciate the IDPs above this. When we get into the MDP, there's a whole bunch of stuff in there, and so maybe we're better off to break, do this in bite-sized pieces. It's going to talk about how much MR, so there's a lot of things I think, you know, council should be considering that I know there's quite a few members from UDI that would like to have some of that opened up. But I think for us to break it off in bite-sized pieces is probably a better way to do it, and we can amend it as we need it rather than thinking we're going to layer this whole thing in one big swooping change. So that'll be my motion that we direct administration to come back to the appropriate standing committee so we can have a good conversation about the 35% top of bank setback.
Thanks, Counsel Plott. Any discussion or debate on Counselor Plott's motion to refer direct administration to bring a report back on the 35% top of bank road access to the appropriate standing committee? Any discussion or debate on that point? Are we all clear with the motion? Counselor Thiessen.
Thank you, Mayor Given. I don't know how this is gonna go. I imagine it's probably gonna pass, but I'm going to hold firm to what we already have established. Doing six years on the watershed, you realize that setbacks from your water courses are very important to the health of an ecosystem, also to the health of the water course itself. Sometimes we mean well, and those intentions take us down the wrong path or maybe even the wrong water course, I guess, just to be punny about it all. So I know we had strong discussions with industry on the previous council about this top of bank. It should come into question. It was just a conversation. We chose not to do anything with it at the time, and I don't think it's impeding development. I just think, you know, our developers need to be creative and find ways, and we need to be, we need to be smart about how we protect probably, you know, the jewel of our city. I'm gonna call it the jewel of the city, I mean, because it is quite literally where everybody wants to live and go and play and hike around. So if we can protect that. It's not that I don't want to have the discussion. If it happens, I'm more than willing to have the discussion. I just don't think I can support this right now. I mean, just understanding that it has been like under five years since we've last had a discussion about top of bank setbacks, and I think administration did a great job in establishing that and also, I guess, kind of supporting it through those previous discussions as well and justifying why it exists. So for those reasons, I won't support this.
Thanks, Counsel Thiessen. Counselor O'Toole.
I was just wondering if this would probably go to policy and bylaws, or would that go to a standing committee?
Counselor Plott's motion was have it go to standing committee.
Well, thank you.
Counsel Pressley.
Great. I'd encourage council to support this. I think it's an important conversation we have. I really, I really agree with the need to protect our waterways and both for an environmental perspective and also for a community enjoyment perspective. I think that Musk C P Park is the jewel of our city, and I always take somebody driving down the twisties if they've never been to Grand Prairie before. And we really do need to preserve that. At the same time, there might be other ways to preserve that. For example, if a developer was putting in a large park or a large public access thing along the top of the banks, well, then I'm willing to give away road because I care about public access and I care about houses being set away from top of bank. I don't really care about a road on top of bank. In fact, I'd love to see a neighborhood where maybe there is no road on top of bank, but there's a really sweet park along it. So I think that the MDP, as it's written, is just too prescriptive for me, and I think we're seeing that in this specific instance where I think there's a potential less than 35% in this development with still having a great neighborhood that gives proper protection to that area. So I really agree with the intent behind this MDP section. I just think it might be too prescriptive. So I hope we take a look at this, and I hope that council will support this motion.
Thanks, Counsel Pressley. Counsel Plott, I see you maybe just close on your motion. Yeah. I don't see anybody else in the queue, so we'll go to you.
I guess there's maybe, maybe I'm misunderstanding, but there's setback and then there's the top of bank road, and I don't think where we put the road affects the setback. You know, if we put a road, it's whether we're allowing houses to be on the back, there's still going to be a setback from top of bank to the back fence. So I'm really just talking about, does it need to be 35% of the exposure from there of road? That's what I'm talking about, I guess. Counsel Thiessen, I'm agreeing with you that we need to protect our parkland. I don't see whether it's a house there or a road there necessarily protecting the park anymore. So I guess, you know, it's really be a philosophical difference, but I would urge council to have this conversation. I think this is one that, especially when it comes to this piece of land, and we've annexed a lot of land going northwest that has this Bear Creek that runs right through it. If this is a problem on the first piece of land that we're gonna see go with development, we're gonna see this problem continually happen, and I think we need to have that conversation about it. You know, the Bear Creek isn't, there's nothing to worry about going south. We don't have any more land available. So this is really a north problem. This is the first development that's gonna run into it, and it doesn't seem to be going well for them. So I really urge council to support this.
Thanks, Counsel Plott. We will call for the vote on Counsel Plott's motion to refer to direct administration bring a report on this requirement to the appropriate standing committee. Please vote. Thank you. That motion carries, so that will come back. Is there any other business arising on this topic? Counsel Clayton.
Just a question. I guess at this point, there was no motion passed for a particular action in regards to this area structure plan, in regards to a council meeting, administration meeting, anything, correct? There was nothing?
So the ASP was defeated at second reading. Council, so the consideration of this ASP is done. It was defeated. Council, direct administration to waive any fees should the applicant choose to reapply on your motion? And so that's the, there was some discussion about the appropriateness of council and a developer negotiating, you know, in the context of this complex project scene. But no, there aren't any other motions that have caught on that.
So I'll try one here. I would encourage council to support this motion because I think there's an opportunity here.
Can you make the motion first?
... structure plan. And the motion being that council, CIO and economic development to work with the developer and landowner of the Hidden Valley lands to come back, to encourage him to bring back the area structure plan for future consideration at council.
So a motion directing the CIO and economic development to work with the landowner to encourage them to bring back a future amendment. You have to turn on your microphone.
The Director of Economic Development.
Director of Infrastructure and Economic Development. Okay. Okay. Open for discussion or debate, Counselor Plott.
Thanks, Mayor Given. I'll be supporting this motion because I really appreciate the intent of it. I think when we have two parties that don't want to have a chat anymore, and it's our job to make sure, hopefully, that they're chatting, I think those are the right two people to put in that room with him. And if we can't get him back to the table, then I guess it's council's job from there. But I really like the intent of this motion because I think it is something that we have to do. We have to make sure that we're open for business and not at all costs, but in this case, it doesn't feel like the proponent feels like we're open for business. And so I really encourage council to support this.
Thanks, Counsel Plott. I see Counsel Pressley in the queue. I'll just enter and say, I appreciate the intent. I can't support the motion because, A, I think that this is the job of administration on a regular basis to be in conversation with landowners and developers, particularly senior administration outside of the development process. And I would, I would, I would, I know, I believe and know that our administration has done significant direct one-on-one consultation on this issue and many others. This is not a case of a developer that has not had access to senior administration over the course of, since the ASP's been developed, honestly, since 2000. City managers and directors have been in direct consultation. So I think, I actually don't think we're aiding the developer. I think what would be more help to the developer is if council dealt with some of the specific issues, established what our practice is, and then management takes those as new marching orders. I think the direction to suggest that they go and talk with them when those talks do happen already will more likely just frustrate the developer rather than council actually just making a decision about some of the other things. Counselor Pressley.
Thank you. I chimed in to say pretty much what Mayor Given just said in terms of, I don't know what's changed if we send administration away with this. I think that we heard really clearly from the developer that they just want council to make a decision, that they feel that they're at loggerheads, and I don't know, but I suspect that administration might feel the same way. And I just think, what's the directive we're giving to administration to work with them? Are we giving them the directive to really sweet-talk them but hold firm and say, please, please, please come back to council? Or are we asking them to go and negotiate and give more ground? And if we are willing to let, if we are asking them to give ground, where are we asking them to give ground? I just think that we need more specific direction than this, and we need more specific action from us before we can ask administration to do more work on this. I don't know what's changed between three hours ago and now that makes us think that this process can work without council involvement.
Counsel Clayton, I see you're in the queue next, but Counsel O'Toole's ahead of it, I'll let you close. Counsel O'Toole.
Thank you very much, Mayor Given. I do agree with you to some point. I would like council to meet with our, the two people that were mentioned, the CIO and Director, and let council know what we're willing to give up or change or proceed with. And then at that point in time, at least we will have some direction, and then down the road, we can go through the process. Thank you.
Thanks, Counsel O'Toole. That's not the proposal that's on the floor, and so I won't speak to that, actually. Counsel Clayton, do you wish to close?
Thank you. I appreciate the concern that you and Counsel Pressley have. However, I have complete faith and confidence in both the CIO and the Director of Infrastructure and Economic Development that from hearing discussions tonight, that they see that there's intent of this council to make some, something work, whether it's specifically through support in obtaining funding through different levels of government for a bridge, whether it's through the stipulation of the geotechnical report. And I also know from hearing the conversation around the room that there's an appetite for discussion on the MR as well as the top of bank. I have complete faith that the CIO and the Director will have discussions that will come to an opportunity which in turn will lead to a conversation with council. That may not be in the motion, but I have complete faith in their ability to include council in what will come to something that as an area structure plan amendment that for council to make a decision on. Thank you.
Thanks for that close, Counsel Clayton. I will call for the vote. Please vote on Counsel Clayton's motion to direct the, just to refresh everybody, to direct the CIO and the Director of Economic Development and Infrastructure to meet with the applicant. That motion does carry. Are we complete with any other business arising? Counsel Pressley.
Great. Thank you, Mayor Given. I really do believe, I really do believe that if we want this, if we want this development to come back and if we want to talk about it more, we need to take some action as council. We can't just let administration go. So another issue that I heard was, what's going on with this? What's going on with this bridge? And while we're still waiting for our transportation master plan, I don't know what the transportation planning in that area looks like. I don't know what potential funding for that bridge looks like. For example, can we use off-site levies from other developments for it? I just don't know anything about that. So I'm gonna make a motion that administration reports to the appropriate standing committee potential funding sources and potential development triggers for a bridge in the Hidden Valley Area Structure Plan.
Thanks, Counsel Pressley. Discussion or debate on that motion? Direct administration report to the appropriate standing committee with potential development triggers and funding sources for the bridge in the Hidden Valley Area Structure Plan. Open for discussion or debate. Counselor Thiessen.
Thank you very much, Mayor Given. I appreciate the intent of Counsel Pressley's motion, but I can't support it. At this stage of the game, we don't even, we're not even sitting on a ASP that's triggering a bridge, and we don't know when the developer is even gonna come back. If they come back even after the meetings with their CIO and their manager or their Director of Infrastructure and Economic Development, there's always the possibility, and I'm hopeful that he will, and there will be compromises that work for everybody. But at this stage of the game, I think it's a bit premature in the proceedings to be asking for that. It's almost like, you know, showing your hand in a poker game, saying, look, I got two kings and I still got the river to go. So I appreciate your intent with this, and I want to know the same thing. I just think this is a bit early in the game for this, and something like that should be triggered maybe after an ASP gets approved, we find a necessity for the bridge, and we start working on an OP, and that's if this land ever develops after tonight. So for all those reasons, I'm sorry, Counsel Pressley, I can't support.
Counsel Thiessen. I'll say that I also won't be able to support the motion because asking administration to identify a funding source for a bridge that we don't know how much it's gonna cost either necessitates administration doing a significant amount of work to get an estimate of cost of the bridge so that they could identify potential funding sources, which and I don't know that we have enough information about the development that's gonna happen around it to know what kind of bridge we would have to get an estimate on. So I won't be able to support the motion. Anybody else on Counsel Pressley's motion? Counsel Pressley's motion was to direct administration bring a report back to the appropriate standing committee with a, to identify potential funding sources for the bridge in the Hidden Valley ASP and potential development triggers. Get those backwards. Not seeing anybody else in the queue, we will call for the vote on that. That motion does not carry. Council, I will suggest, of course, it's up to all of you to decide what motions you want to make, but I'll suggest that it's possible that we have reached the end of the business arising from this. There may be other items that this triggers for us that we might wish to bring up either at standing committees or in other forums in council strategic planning or in the budget. But it's possible that we are all feeling the way we are because we've actually just reached the conclusion of what's possible to accomplish this evening, unless there's something else that I missed. Counsel Pressley.
Thank you, Mayor Given. I don't have another motion I want to make, but I do just want to acknowledge that we need to have another delegation come and speak about this as well. We spent a lot of time talking about the, talking about the first one, and I just want to acknowledge that we also did have others coming in to address this, which I appreciate. And saying, I know one of my concerns with this ASP is I could support it in principle at a very high level. I could see outline plans, which would cause me to say yes, this ASP was really good, but I'm just not quite there with confidence. And a big reason for that is because I don't, I don't think that, I don't agree with asking a landowner to give that much land to a natural preserve. I really do think that we need to be thinking about, how do we preserve natural grasslands in this area? How do we preserve adequate public amenities and somewhat of a natural feel, at least in parts of this? Make sure that everybody in that area can get to a natural feeling area with an easy walk or if their mobility challenged with a drive. And so I just want to acknowledge that even though we spent most time talking about the one delegation, that I think another important point was brought up and an important consideration as we talk about this in the future.
Thanks, Counsel Pressley. Thanks for that. We will move on then, since we finished our public hearings and business arising. We had no delegations this evening, so we will move then to council member reports. And I did ask around. I don't think I had anybody take me up on reports from external agencies, boards, and commissions. So we'll do council roundtable, and we'll start with Counsel Friesen, just because she made eye contact.
Look at me go. I don't think I've ever been first before. That means I get to choose.
If I put you in one of these... If I if I put you in one of the corner spots, you're more likely to be first. You know, that's the thing about those corner spots. You tend to be first more often.
I don't mind. Uh, I would, um, yeah, I despite having been very ill over the last couple of weeks and having Thanksgiving in there as well, I did get to attend the twenty twenty budget engagement session at East Link and I was really pleased to see and get to talk to so many of our administration members from, uh, different, different areas. And I also noted that they enjoyed talking to each other. So that was really cool. And we did have a few members of the community out. Um, and I was really happy to 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 get to engage with those few that I did. Uh, I would encourage, uh, residents of Grand Prairie, though, to really look for for opportunities like this to actually come out and talk to our administration. Um, because it's the time when you get to have that back and forth conversation that, uh, fails us on social media and it fails us in the delay of emails and it fails us in what we read in the media and it fails us in what we see in, um, press releases, for instance. So there is nothing like that face-to-face and I really dearly enjoyed it. Thank you very much to all of our city staff who came out and to those community members that I got to speak with. Thank you.
Counsel Freezen, Counselor Plott?
Thanks, Mayor Given. Uh, a couple of things that I want to highlight, I guess, for me. Um, one, um, I I got the chance to finally go disc golfing, so I can thank Counselressi for that. I probably won't beat Greg Barsby anytime soon, but, uh, it was fun to get out there and give it a go. I also want to thank, um, you know, Mayor Given for doing an excellent job at our intermunicipal meeting the other day. That's realize with that many people in the room, sometimes it's like herding cats and you did a fantastic job and I think it was really good dialogue at the meeting. So and lastly, I was just really grateful to be part of the, uh, chamber luncheon with council. I think that's a really good opportunity for council. I really, I really like those roundtable forums. Specifically with the chamber because I do think we've got some people there in that that room that see Grand Prairie as an overall community, not just specifically for their own business. And so I really appreciated the conversation with them and I want to thank the the chamber for the invite and I'm and I'm hoping that's something we get to do again in the near future.
Thanks, Counsel. Counsel Thieson?
Uh, thank you very much, Mayor Given. Only two things here today and one really quickly, uh, and I missed it at the last roundtable. Uh, but at the Sisters in Spirit proclamation walk vigil and monument unveiling, uh, I've gone to this every year that I've been elected on council and there was, it was significantly different this year. Uh, typically we walk along the ditches, uh, along the major roads and stuff like that. But administration had, uh, set the bar really high, I guess, for future events because they had closed down a lane of road and given the people who are walking on that march that opportunity to actually walk on level ground so that people could see why they are marching and why they are walking. There's just a lot of thoughtful consideration put in by by our Transportation Department and probably right up to our CIO and our directors who were helped make that, uh, walk, uh, not only more visible, but a lot more accessible for people in our community who wanted to participate. So I just wanted to thank all of our bylaw and all of our Transportation Department members who were there ensuring that everyone had a safe walk and were highly visible for such an important event. The other event that I wanted to just talk about is, uh, is on October sixteenth, they had the opportunity as Deputy Mayor to give greetings uh, on behalf of the city at the Ryan Wagner Memorial Inaugural Award Presentation for the three D charity hockey and soccer tournament. Uh, and the reason why I wanted to touch base on this is, uh, largely because, uh, if you're not aware of the three D hockey, hockey and soccer tournament, uh, it's a, it's a three-on-three event, uh, that, uh, is participated in by all levels of our our school divisions, the Catholic, the Peace Wapiti and the Grand Prairie Public School Division. Uh, and students get together, build teams and fundraise, uh, to help sick kids, to help kids who otherwise like maybe a bit more taxed and their families may be a bit more taxed to go and, uh, get the medical treatment that they that they need. And it helps to subsidize them for that. So a good cause through sport. Uh, it was an honor to be able to give those greetings at the inaugural award presentation. And not to just, not just anybody, the Ryan Wagner, in case you're not aware, uh, used to work at the Philip J. Curry Dinosaur Museum. Part of his story is, uh, is he was, I guess, the bubble boy, I guess, is what they called his disease. Uh, but he needed constant medical treatment and the three D, uh, charity, uh, tournament helped him and his family be able to do that affordably within their means so they didn't have to break the bank on it. Uh, he lived, uh, up until the age of nineteen. After dealing with many, uh, with many medical concerns, uh, and he was personified as a hero. His mother and family, uh, accepted the award on his honor. And I just want to say in last year at the, uh, Sports Council Awards Presentation, um, when the organizers, Darren Foley was presented Lifetime Achievement Award because this charity locally has has generated a million dollars to help sick kids get the medical treatment that they need. And not only that, I think the coolest thing about it is, is that it's kids fundraising for kids. Uh, and it's helping to grow empathy and, uh, support and friendship and camaraderie and doesn't put any differences between us. It actually says, hey, we're all in this together. And I think that's a great moral and a great value to, uh, celebrate and cherish in our community. So it was an honor to be a part of that and thank you to all the people who put in the hard work to make that event possible every year this year on December second.
Very much, Counsel Thieson. Counselressi?
Great. Thank you. Well, a couple of things I'll mention, since he brought it up, I'll mention that Counsel Plott was one of the best first-time disc golfers I've ever seen. So gauntlets down for one of the rest of you joining us this spring. Two two highlights for me was I got to, on behalf of Mayor Given, I got to attend the Northern Alberta Mayors and Reeves Caucus Meeting held in Edmonton. I don't know how often that meeting happens. I think it happens a couple of times a year. But what was exciting about it was my understanding is this was the first time that band chiefs were invited. So there was the Grand Chief of Treaty Six was there. The Grand Chief of Treaty Eight was invited, was the last minute dropout, but he had a representative there. And then chiefs of a, of a number of First Nations, including Sturgeon Lake, close to us, were were all were present. And it was cool. It felt like a bit of a historic moment, having these bands talking to elected leaders, municipal leaders about how they can work together. So that was, that was fun for me. Uh, it was really interesting seeing a panel of really successful collaborations that have happened in Slaved Lake and also in Edmonton and just talking about the benefits that have come, come through them from everything from really great economic development opportunities to really great strides forward addressing homelessness and addictions in in communities. And really, and what it came down to, the success came down to is relationship building and building mutual understanding. So made me excited about the opportunities we might have as we move forward with land acknowledgement and with learning more and building relationships on ours. So it was really encouraging for me to be there. Uh, something else that happened there was we had the Minister of Indigenous Affairs was there, talked about billion-dollar Indigenous co-investment fund and how it's just oil and gas now, but they're hoping to maybe relatively quickly move it into other industries, which might create opportunities for more for urban folks. And then also we had the Minister of Municipal Affairs come and I think he said too many things surprising, but I think he confirmed two things that I kind of suspected and this is grossly paraphrased, but one was you're going to lose infrastructure funding. It's going to hurt, but we have to do it. This is one thing I heard. But the other thing I heard was that was very positive, I think, for the city of Grand Prairie is we proposed a police funding, uh, new police funding formula and we're very likely going to do it. It sounded like he was using pretty strong, very strong language in favor of that. So that was encouraging for me to hear. I think the one other thing I'll highlight is Counselor Thieson and I were at the Community Opioid Response Task Force meeting today and um, for those of you that aren't aware, most of us probably are, but there's a real shift going on in our community right now in terms of seeing a lot more meth on our streets and it creates a very different type of high than opioids do instead of sleepy, more more loopy, more aggressive, more energetic. And it's creating real issues for our CMP as well as our service providers. And I think that there was, the table today, I says not a lot of, I don't know what the right word is, not not fear, but worry about how's our, does our community have the resources to cope and are the workers that are working the front lines, are they going to last or are we going to burn through them too fast? It was a really sobering conversation for me and it's, yeah, I don't know what the solutions there are. And there were some conversations at the table about how maybe we can work better together. I I think it's a challenge we're all aware of as been here community for a while. Maybe you see a significant change and not for the better right now. So I think that's worth counsel being aware of.
Thanks very much, Counselressi. Counsel Oto.
Thank you very much, Mayor Given. Uh, just highlight a couple of items, uh, that haven't been mentioned already. I attended the Vital Signs Report on October eighth. I attended the TD Bank fiftieth anniversary, except I was about a half an hour late as that was put into our schedule, but we did still get to mingle with some of the, uh, representatives of the bank. And just a personal note, Ryan Wagner, I did know him on a personal level and, uh, even though he was at a point where he was terminal, uh, there was never a sad face on his face. It was always a smile. And just when you think he was going to get, uh, down and dirty, uh, he would crack a joke and say, hey, that's just how it is. So, uh, he always had a sense of humor that was quite unique. Uh, also, I, uh, attended the Goodwill City of Grand Prairie Aqua Terra Shop and Drop. And I just want to reiterate that that there was about six thousand pounds of clothes that didn't go to the landfill and that was that met the objective. Uh, there was four hundred ninety-seven people that attended. There was approximately ninety people in line before the doors even opened. And, uh, one other thing is that the highlight of my day when I was there is a lady come in and she dropped off a whole bunch of newborn clothes that still had tags on them. Obviously, her baby was too big for the smaller clothes. And five minutes later, a lady come in looking for baby clothes and she took, uh, four large laundry bags or grocery bags full out and you couldn't, uh, believe the smile on her face that there was no charge or anything like this. And, uh, they were perfect, clean and brand new. So that's my report. Thank you.
Thanks, Counsel Oto.
Thanks, Mayor Given. Uh, just mentioned two, uh, events that haven't been mentioned already. I attended the, uh, Victoria's Attic Save the Girls, uh, event. Uh, it was a fashion show and fundraiser in support of breast cancer. Um, it's the second annual and two years in a row, the event has sold out before it's even really gone public. So congratulations to the group of women that organized that because I think they did very well, um, for the charity that evening. As well, on Saturday, I attended the GPRC President's Ball. Uh, it was Don Nachek's last time to address, uh, the room. And they had a great announcement that the college has been successful in their capital campaign, uh, raising, um, twenty point six million dollars. So uh, and that's not including any, um, proceeds from the evening, um, from the gala that evening. So, uh, congratulations to them. Um, as well today, you may have heard, um, the VP of External Relations, Carmen Hax, had announced his retirement. So, um, a big kudos to him and there'll be a few more along the way, um, over the next little while, I'm sure, as Carmen has been, um, vital in many organizations fundraising goals over the years in Grand Prairie from the Hospital Foundation to Evergreen Park to Center Two Thousand to the art gallery, um, to the college. So uh, Carmen has truly been, um, a key philanthropist in our community and and he deserves big congratulations for the work that he's done in our community. So a big shout out to him tonight. Thank you.
Counsel Clayton, Counselor Minhas?
Thank you, Mayor Given. I think as everything is said and, um, one thing is missing, uh, there was Eastern Culture. What do you call it? Diwali Festival and, uh, that's the only one I think is missing, the Kavan and the Jackie, the rest of them said. So that was a great thing too for, uh, Eastern Culture Punjabi. So it was good there. I went there a little bit, but I was in the president wall with the Jackie and the Bill Given. So that was a great thing.
Thanks, Counsel Minhas. Uh, I think, uh, most of the events that I attended have been reported on by other council members. I just wanted to also add my, uh, thanks to Don Nachek. Um, with the, uh, marking of his last president's, uh, ball for the GPRC. He certainly over his twelve years of time at at the institution has really been a key figure in our community, a really key advocate for our community and has done a fantastic job of guiding the development of that institution, which is so, so important to not just Grand Prairie, but the entire northwest of the province, northeast of British Columbia. Um, and certainly want to wish him well as, uh, he moves on with his family life. Um, and look forward to beating the new, uh, president if and when, uh, or I guess when that announcement is made. Uh, but certainly want to give my personal thanks to Don for all his work and supporting our community over the years. Uh, and with that, our meetings adjourned.